Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to welcome you all to the board meeting this afternoon. To access translation, please click on the globe icon below or at Dejawn. You can go to the corner of the room to get translation. We are heading into our closed session for tonight. Before we do, we are here to listen to any public comment there might be on our closed session items. The public gets two minutes for public comment per speaker. The closed session items that we are discussing are public employee discipline dismissal, releasing complaint, and public employee performance evaluation. Staff, do we have any public comment?
No, in this moment, no any comment area public.
No public comment at this time.
Thank you very much. We will reconvene for open session at 6:30 tonight. Thank you, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Thank you. Good evening. We're gonna start? All right, here we go. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome you all to our board meeting tonight. To access translation, please click on the phone icon below or at Dejawn. You can go to the corner of the room to get translation. We are returning from closed session after opening procedures. The public will have the opportunity to make public comment. The board has changed the public comment format. We have the opportunity on non-agenda items in person through the Zoom app and by telephone at the beginning of the meeting. At the beginning of the meeting, public comment will last one hour. The time allotted for each speaker is two minutes. If you are attending the meeting in person, you will need to submit a request to address the board form to indicate your desire to speak on an agenda item. After it's been turned in to the staff, they are placed in the order of when they are turned in. We also call on one speaker, one at a time, and alternate between public comment at Dejawn and one on Zoom. If participating via Zoom, you need to raise your hand by clicking the appropriate icon in the Zoom app or by pressing star nine. If accessing the meeting by phone, no yielding of time or substitution of speakers permitted. The public will also have the opportunity to make public comment on agenda items after the staff presentation for each discussion and action item. The public will have 10 minutes per item and one minute per speaker. Due to the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. Now let's move to our opening procedures. First, we'll have the pledge allegiance. Everyone, if you are willing and able, please rise.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Now we're gonna move to our land, labor, and body acknowledgement. We have a video for the land acknowledgement. Staff, can we play that video, please? Good evening, everyone. For everyone on Zoom, we are taking a five-minute recess. Thank you. Thank you again to Walter T. Helms Middle School for your band performance. Excellent job. We are now moving on to agenda item B8, request to address the board. We have Ms. Jackson and Ms. Keith.
To the trustees of the West Contra Costa Unified School District, to Madam President, to Superintendent Hearst, cabinet members, and staff. My name is Michelle Jones Jackson. I am the Education Committee Chairperson for the El Cerrito Branch, NAACP. My family moved to 5212 Cypress Avenue in 1963, where the family still resides today. Yes, I am a proud alumni of Stige Elementary School. Because of the racial discrimination, inequities, abandonment, and neglect of Stige Elementary School, we stand here today in a state of emergency. On behalf of the suffering students who have been displaced, parents who have been inconvenienced, teachers, staff who have been disrespected, and the entire East Shore community who are witnessing right before our eyes systemic racism at its core as we watch new schools being built all around the district. The community is coming before you this day, the ninth day in the month of October 2024, declaring that Stige Elementary School, the oldest school in the district, the school with the largest African-American population in the district, the school that has a history and a value overlooked regarding the great migration of African-Americans coming from the South during World War II, the school that has produced the largest aggregate of African-American leaders in West Contra Costa County. We stand before you today to receive a firm commitment from the West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Trustees to move from a plan of modernization to a plan for a complete, full rebuild. Students and faculty and staff Students and faculty and staff have risked their lives going into a dilapidated school building every day. Three generations of students have attended the World War II structure of a school that has not had any upgrades since 1943. If you find that hard to believe, then why are our students being bused here to Levanya de Jong? An entire school of students, teachers, and staff uprooted three weeks before the first day of school, quickly adjusting to attend another school across town. How often does that happen? No planning, no purpose, a fast, fast track transition. It's crucial for students and parents, teachers and staff to reimagine building something better together, building trust again in this system while restoring dignity, equity, and pride to an idea that's 158 years old, imagined by former slaves. They knew how important learning environments are to one's future. A good public education can change a child's life. Teachers are great, and they can make a huge, big difference. We want the best too for our students. This cohort of Stige has come every day, five days a week, to a system beloved, a school beloved, that does not appear to love them. In 1866, there were more African-Americans in the House of Representatives and the Senate during the Reconstruction period than ever. They were former enslaved elected officials. During this short period of time, legislation was passed by these former slaves. They did a lot in their little time of existence. One of the legislative bills passed that still exists today is the law to build a public school system. African-Americans initiated this possibility, voted and approved that all students will have an equal right to a public education. It all started in 1865 when former slaves established the Freedmen's Bureau, which allowed them to raise money to build public schools for everyone. Ever since then, there has been a unique underlying factor that weakens schools and expectations of students in the African-American communities today. Some people call it the backlash of progress. 158 years later, we are still fighting for justice, fairness, and public education. This is crucial. One of the Stige parents shared with me that their child had a substitute teacher all year long. This is evident that the conditions were so bad that many quality teachers refused this assignment. If you build it, they will come. Please review your policies on discrimination, we heard it tonight, equity, and anti-race, documented in your code of ethics. Let's establish hope for students and families now, today, and those yet unborn, that they will have an opportunity to attend Stige in a different environment, an environment that is conducive to learning, an environment that can increase test scores, an environment that attracts good teachers, an environment that supports administration and the community. Stige is a young community with a very bright future. Our second request. Once the construction begins, the community recommends that the district will ensure quarterly meetings with parents, community, and stakeholders and others for updates, input, and a healthy community partnership to rebuild a Stige Elementary School that we can all be proud of and enjoy. Again, this is our formal request to the Board of Trustees to change the designation for Stige Elementary School from a modernization to a full, complete rebuild.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Hurst, and the members of the West Contra Costa Unified School District Administrative Staff. My name is Lakeisha Mitchell Keith, and I have lived in the Stige community for my entire life. And I am privileged to stand and speak up for the Stige parents, the teachers, staff, community, but most importantly, for our children. In your Board's August 7, 2024 anti-racism policy, you state, "The West Contra Costa Unified School District's Board of Education is committed to work of the anti-racism, the conscious and active effort to identify, challenge, correct racial inequities in the systems and institutions within our schools and our community." To identify, challenge, and correct. Ms. Jackson just identified the roots of racism and subsequent inequities that our children, our babies, their parents, our teachers, our staff, our administrators, and our community have suffered due to the unjust policies and decisions that have resulted in the failure to rebuild Stige Elementary School. Identify is the first action word that this board used in your anti-racism policy. However, I stand here today to challenge you to correct the mistakes that we all have identified. In 2016, the West Contra Costa Unified School District approved your long-range facilities master plan, stating that due to the condition of the existing buildings and the small school site, Stige was not recommended for modernization. Instead, on page 127, it states, "Stige Elementary School is third in line for total replacement," according to the priority list. In 2016, Stige Elementary School was third in line for a total replacement because a modernization was not recommended due to the problematic facility conditions that existed almost 10 years ago. Your district's facilities master plan goes on to say that the remaining bond authority and the district is not expected to reach as far as the third project. However, if a new bond is passed before the critical needs are addressed, the replacement should occur instead of a critical needs project. Well, the critical needs of Stige Elementary School, from our structural system deterioration and near failures, our sewage system failures, and the potential exposures to an unknown variety of environmental and safety hazards, has never been addressed and remedied. And a bond measure, Measure R, which provided $575 million for school facility constructions, was subsequently passed in 2020, but instead of it being allocated equitably, our babies, our parents, our teachers, our staff, our administrators, and our community have suffered and continue to suffer. Stige was designated for a total replacement rebuild project, and members of your board deprioritize Stige Elementary, this 81-year-old school facility, from third in line to fifth, sixth, seventh, and now eighth. Members of your board also voted to redesignate the Stige construction project from a total replacement to a modernization. And the current plans to modernize Stige Elementary School using modular trailers that resemble a prison camp rather than an environment conducive to learning is a travesty and must be corrected. Remember that your Board's anti-racism policy states that unjust ideas and policies and the racial inequity they produce have shaped you, our schools, and our society. And because of this, you promise to strive to uncover unconscious biases and practice anti-racism as individuals and as board members. You challenge yourself to persist through this discomfort necessary for growth and learning, to deepen your listening and your examination of racism and oppression, and to develop a strong understanding of how your personal experiences and feelings fit into a larger picture of continual oppression. Remember that you said that each member of your school board, individually and collectively, is responsible for creating and nurturing an anti-racist learning environment where each student, each staff member, and community partner is a respected and a valued member of the West Contra Costa Unified School District community, and that you are uniquely positioned, and it is your responsibility to identify and dismantle racist ideas and inequitable policies in yourselves and across this district. So in that spirit, we again challenge this board to correct the mistakes and give our children, their parents, our teachers, our staff, our administrators, and our community a firm commitment to change the designation of the Stige Elementary construction project from a modernization to a total replacement and rebuild, and that the rebuild be designed in a manner that is not only equitable to every other school in this district, but is also in line with the amenities, the resources, and the standards set forth in the West Contra Costa Unified School District's Elementary School Educational Specifications. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. We are now moving to Agenda Item B9, West Contra Costa Unified School District Public Comment. How to address the Board. Members of the public are invited to speak to the Board about any matter that is not otherwise on the agenda and is related to issues affecting public education in WCCUSD. Public comment will last approximately 60 minutes. The time allotted for each speaker is two minutes. Individuals wishing to speak must submit a WCCUSD public comment form, and if participating via Zoom, individuals need to raise their hand in the Zoom app. Due to the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in the public. Staff, do we have public comment for tonight?
Yes, we do. Our first public comment is Crystal Perez.
Hi, my name is Crystal Perez, and I'm a senior in Kennedy High School. I'm here to talk about how my soccer coach with... She wasn't... Oh, sorry. Coach Jackie, sorry. Thank you. Coach Jackie, my soccer coach. She... I've known her since my sophomore year, and she has helped me in a lot of ways, like helping me feel a little more confident myself and helping me in my sport, soccer. And recently, she has not been hired for being head coach of the girls' soccer team. And while she is currently being the girls' volleyball coach, and she has helped the girls' soccer team in a lot with like uniforms and and equipment that we need. And we have been lacking in that, and she went to the principal for it, for which, you know, to help us. I'm sorry. She went to the principal to ask them to help with the uniforms and equipment that we require. And they didn't listen to her, so she went to the district about it, and and they also didn't really listen, so... She wasn't hired for this.
Go ahead. Young lady. Ms. Johnson, see, Dr. Johnson, you're already doing it. Thank you. Young lady, talk to Dr. Johnson so we can get the rest of your comment. Thank you. We are moving to the next public comment, please.
Next public comment is Christina Huerta. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. My name is Christina Huerta, and I'm a proud Kennedy teacher. I'm calling in tonight in support of Coach Jackie, who was not hired as Kennedy girls' soccer coach this year. I have been at Kennedy 11 years, and Coach Jackie has been our girls' soccer coach for as long as I can remember. She built the team into what it is today. I attended games my first year at Kennedy, and sometimes we didn't have enough players to sub in, and it was hard to get the girls to commit. Coach Jackie changed that. She even organizes alumni games, and the fact that former students show up to play is a testament to the impact Coach Jackie has had on their lives. Coach Jackie helps build leaders, and her commitment to Kennedy is unmatched. She has helped coach several teams, supports soccer tournaments at lunchtime, and she has attended countless graduations. And that's all I see, but I'm sure there is so much more she does behind the scenes. Coach Jackie is a true advocate of women's sports and deserves to be the soccer coach for Kennedy. The fact that she is fighting this decision is proven enough that she wants to be a part of our school community. I urge the Board and Superintendent Hurst to review the situation and hire Coach Jackie as soon as possible. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Tenelta Thompson.
Ms. Thompson, before you go, I just want everybody to know, in the audience and online, we do two minutes for the first hour, and after that hour, we do one-minute public comment. So get your speech ready and your comment ready to where if you're not within that first hour, your time drops from two minutes to one minute. I just don't want anybody caught off guard. Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Your two minutes whenever you're ready.
Thank you, President Smith Folds. My name is Tenetta Thompson. I am a parent of a student athlete at El Cerrito High School, and I'm making this statement in support of Coach Rincon. This is a timeline of why we are here today, if I can have my parents and students stand up so that we can be acknowledged. On August 30, at the Amador Valley game, two public safety officers were provided, and there was no money for additional units. There was one El Cerrito Police Department unit. We told Michael Booker about this, and then coincidentally, when I brought up the sidelines, our coaches were removed from the coaching staff. On 9/20, Coach Jake was put on leave from coaching and AD because somebody compromised his personal vehicle registration information that was provided in an NCS report. We had a meeting with Coach Jake, Mr. Merriweather, and Mr. Norington, and they said that they did not want emails to go to the school board or for us to speak at the school board. They wanted to keep it a school-site issue and that the investigation will happen for Coach Jake to get cleared, and they said it was not NCS-related. On 9/23, Coach Jake was cleared by Mr. Norington. On 9/24, Coach Jake was called a victim by Mr. Norington. On 9/25, Mr. Norington called me a pit bull to his staff for citing the penal code to him and said that why did Coach Jake sic myself on him? He said he was not scared of me toward his staff. On 9/26, Mr. Norington called a student into his office to describe his home, where he lives, the number of cars, and the entrance there. That same day, Coach Jake was called in by Mr. Norington and Jose De Leon to say he was put on leave immediately. Coach Jake writes a letter to Dr. Hurst in that the investigation was closed on Monday and that this is now retaliatory and biased. On 9/27, Coach Brown writes Dr. Hurst a letter alleging bias and uncomfortable accessing students' records for this investigation. Mr. Norington makes a phone call, and five minutes later, Coach Nick is relieved of his duties. At that time, Coach Jake's car is vandalized, and I thank you for listening to me. Another parent, Kelly, is going to speak for the rest of the timeline.
Our next public comment is Jeffrey Bean. Please unmute. Our next public comment is Jeffrey Bean. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, my name is Kelly Gilmore.
Hold on one second. We do Zoom, and then we'll come back. So stay right there. We'll do Zoom, and then we come back to the room, someone in the room. So we alternate. Thank you.
Hello, Jeffrey Bean here. I'm a fifth grade teacher at Shannon Elementary. This is my tenth year teaching at Shannon. I'm calling today to advocate for my students. I was, Shannon was part of the cohort of schools in the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year that piloted the iReady assessment program. I want to, this is my latest attempt to bring to your attention the inappropriateness of this assessment. Students spend a lot of time taking this assessment. It takes a lot of clapping time away from learning, particularly in May, at the end of the school year. This is very disruptive to us trying to finish our school year. I finally got data from my students from last year on how long they took to take the assessment from the iReady website. My one student, who was one of my top students last year, spent two hours fifty-four minutes. That's nearly three hours on the math assessment in May and four hours fifty-five minutes on the English assessment. That's nearly eight hours of testing. That's after completing the state-required test, tests, the California Science Test, et cetera. I have spoken to district staff about this multiple times. I've sent emails. And I think it's time for the board to do something and to reject additional funding for the company that makes iReady. The test is only vaguely accurate as to how it rates my students. One of my top readers currently in my class reads at grade level or above was scored at second grade level. And it just takes a lot of learning time away from teaching. And I think it's inappropriate. And eight hours on a test after CAPS could be considered abusive. It's just not cool. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Next public comment is Queeda Craft.
Hello, my name is Kelly Gilmore. I'm a parent of a student athlete at El Cerrito High School, and I am making this statement in support of Coach Jake. Here is the continuation of the timeline that our team manager spoke of. On nine thirty, Coach Jake was told that this was an N C S investigation. El Cerrito High School staff, former employee, to access the football team's grades from last semester and the summer. On ten-one, Michael Booker seen in a black car with tenant windows by parents at a school, students felt this card description was following them after practice. Professional photographer who has been taking photos of students at Seven of Nine High School in the district asked by El Cerrito High School cashier to send W nine from two thousand and twenty-three. Already in their possession and added where Norington and De Leon. Nick Brown was the cashier in two thousand and twenty-three. Clearly, the retaliatory audit in light of the investigation. From ten-one to ten-three, rumors being spread that twelve El Cerrito High School football players are being investigated. Ten-three to ten-four, parents of football players being asked to provide I D when signing out their child for appointments. Everything done to our kids is because school leaders and district appointees just don't like the fact that we have thriving, a thriving program. No one is thinking about the impact these retaliatory and unfair tactics are really harming our kids. No one else suffers but the kids and the uncertainty. Bring Coach Jake back. Thank you for listening.
Our next public comment is Maisha Harris Gash. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. Maisha Harris Gash, Kennedy High School teacher, Kennedy High School alum. I was gonna be quiet tonight, but when I heard one of our students stand up and advocate for her coach, Coach Jackie, I had to say something. One thing I do work with my young people with is about self-advocacy. And so I am so proud of this young lady for stepping up tonight. I don't know no Coach Jackie, but piggybacking on what my colleague Ms. Huerta said, Coach Jackie has been around for years, and she stepped up. She stepped in to help our female athletes. And so I have nothing but positive experiences with her. More personal, one of my babies who's graduating this year, she's been playing soccer. She loves it. She enjoys it. So the connection that my student has with Coach Jackie has been nothing but positive for my student to even step out of her comfort zone. And so I just wanted to just, like I say, piggyback on the student, piggyback on my colleague about Coach Jackie. Like I said, I don't know what the situation is, but I've had nothing but positive experiences and interactions with her. And so that's all I got. Everybody have a great night.
Our next public comment is Queeda Craft.
All right. Good evening, board. My name is Queeda Craft. I'm a parent of a student, John Craft, at E C. It's his senior year. We're here to make a statement of support for Coach Jake. My husband and I have four children, twenty-nine years old to seventeen, and learning has been a must for each of them, higher learning, higher education. As long-term youth high school and college coaches, my husband and I are mentors ourselves. We have always prayed and looked for the same qualities and standards we live by in those who have coached our children, all of them, or been a part of their lives academically and athletically. It's about leaving a legacy, and Coach Jake is doing that with boots on the ground, being in these kids' lives. Coach Jake and his wife Ashley and family are dear to us and hold strong values and qualities and faith. He has continued to live it before these young men and raised the standard, not just in football, but for their life beyond high school and the football field. Our family is thankful and grateful for Coach Jake and pray that he is allowed to return to his needed post and position with the team and for these young men. Have a good evening.
Our next public comment is Latifah King.
Hello. I'm here to express my strong support for Coach Jake, who has recently been suspended. I believe this decision is based on unfounded rumors rather than unfair, a fair assessment of his character and contributions to our team and community. Coaches play an invaluable role in the lives of our youth athletes. They provide not only tactical guidance, but also essential emotional and physical support. Many of these players see their coaches as big brothers and uncles, individuals they can turn to during difficult times. The coaches has consistently stepped up to provide that mentorship, helping players navigate personal challenges, teaching them how to advocate for themselves, and even offering food and other resources when needed. For many of our athletes, especially those who lack parental support, the coaches, Coach Jake along with the others, has been crucial figures and instilled in confidence and resilience. Their commitment to the well-being of their players goes far beyond the field. He fosters a sense of family and community that is vital for their development. I urge you to reconsider the decision to suspend Coach Jake. His positive impact on the team and the lives of these youth athletes is immeasurable. Let us not allow rumors to overshadow the significant role he plays in shaping their futures. Thank you for your attention to this matter. I hope for swift resolution that allows them to return to their important role. Well, I got a little bit more time, so I guess I'll go on. Also, there has been, this investigation has trickled down to having one of our parent volunteers being banned from the sidelines at the De La Sal game. When Coach Jake and Coach Nick submitted complaints of unfair treatment along with Mrs. Thompson's report of inappropriate comment made by Mr. Norington, Coach Hawk suddenly was deemed to be unfit on the sidelines despite being a clear volunteer. He was nonetheless allowed to assist with field cleanup witnessed by district employees. In addition, Mr. Norington told a staff member that Coach Hawk and Coach Nick Brown.
Our next public comment is Latrell P. Harris.
Hi, my name is Latrell. I am a parent of a student athlete at El Cerrito High School, and I am making this statement in support of Coach Jake because the leadership and district appointees did not receive the intended results of having the only Latino football coach in the district removed from our program based on lies and his private records compromised. The district and the school leadership are retaliating against our head coach and our kids, all because we support Coach Jake and won't let them intimidate us from speaking up for what is right. It has shown that the leadership at El Cerrito is not in it for the long haul. It was said that he was brought in to get rid of Coach Jake. He, as in the principal. Whether that statement is true or not, it is coming to fruition based on the principals and the district appointees' actions. The kids barely see the principal, and he is in his office all day except to check I Ds for parents when he has a whole attendant staff to do so. He is moving on from El Cerrito when we all have to still be here trying to make sure that our kids are set up for the future and achieving higher learning. Being principal to the current leadership is a stepping stone for one day being in Dr. Hurst's position as a district superintendent. No one cares more about the safety and well-being of these kids more than Coach Jake. Bring Coach Jake back, listen to us for once, and put the kids first for once. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Alon Harrison.
Good evening, board. How y'all doing today? I came up here to talk about the Black kids. Hi, y'all know that, huh? Tonight, I wanted to share that I seen a contract on our board agenda, and I was concerned because we are still dealing with a lot of discrimination and equity, and we have an equity policy now, and I don't know how that's being enforced. We have a contract of somebody who's supposed to be supporting with that. And I want to know, how is all that money? And I've been watching her since the last superintendent was here. And how is all that money changing outcomes for Black students? Because when I'm looking at how Black students feel welcome in our district, how they're coming in our district, I see a little change, but not over a million-dollar change. We've been paying for this contract for quite a while, and I'm concerned about the deliverables and how we are going to ensure that we're getting what our money, what we're paying for. How is the staff doing? Who's monitoring that? How is the educators receiving the training or whatever she's supposed to be doing? Because I haven't seen a board report on what she's doing for our district staff. So please, when you give contracts for that length of time, because I think she's been here like three or four years doing equity in our district, I would like to see, how is that affecting the butts in the seat? How is our children getting something from this long contract that we have with this person delivering equity? And I would like to also see, how is our equity policy going to be implemented where the students are aware that they're going to, that they're part of a district that has a policy like that? Do they know? Do the parents know? And I would like for that to be more inclusive when you guys are doing that equity work. Thank you. I'm complete.
Our next public comment is Sarah Simone.
Hello. I'm making this statement on support of Coach Jake at El Cerrito High. I am a parent of a student athlete at El Cerrito High and also an El Cerrito grad myself. Athletics are a crucial part of many kids' lives, as they were mine. What the district and school leadership did to Coach Jake was to steal an experience and memories that our athletes will never get back. It was Coach Jake that brought a nationally-ranked team to El Cerrito to play the Gauchos. We have never seen so many district staff at a football game or sporting event. Nor had we ever seen so many El Cerrito police at a game. The ticket sales were more than fifteen thousand dollars just for that game alone. But this money won't go to the team. Instead, we'll hear about how there's no money for buses. There's no money for new equipment, for safety equipment as well. The district said that Coach Jake could not be there because someone had accessed his personal information. None of it makes sense to any of us families and supporters of El Cerrito. Employees made sure that they were on the sidelines at that game. They were talking to De La Sal staff as well. They singled out Coach Jake, and they got what they wanted, and they made De La feel safe while coaching at a high-profile game. They got to watch, be fans, and have the best seats in the house while we watched El Cerrito staff, who were permitted nowhere near the game, have to clean up the field. Has anyone thanked Coach Jake for bringing De La Sal to El Cerrito when they haven't been here since nineteen eighty-nine, when we were in the same league? Because I remember. This type of behavior from the leadership at El Cerrito and interned district and contracted employees is inexcusable. You're underestimating the positive impact coaches and teachers have on all of these student athletes' lives. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Terry Wilson, Jr.
I am Terry Wilson, Jr., a co-player, ex-player. Jake has done a lot for me as a player. So to be under him, under his staff, he's a lot, a lot that he does for his family, his friends, his ex-coaches. It's a representation of what I do, how I am for these kids and with my other coaches. He is El Cerrito. Program doesn't look the same without him. Nothing looks the same without him at the school, everything. So bring Coach Jake back.
Our next public comment is Keon Leslie. Keon Leslie. Gary Youngblood.
I just wanted to say, free Coach Jake. You know, he a good role model for all of us, and he's missed throughout the day, every day on practice. That's all I got to say.
Our next public comment is Gary Youngblood.
All I wanted to say is bring Coach Jake back. You know what I'm saying? He's the heart of our team. We need him. Practice. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Next public comment is Tyson Williams.
My name is Tyson Williams. I'm proud representative of El Cerrito High School. As an athlete, while football is one of my passions, also dedicated. As an athlete, wow, as an athlete, football is one of my passions, also dedicated to attract athlete and mostly a student scholar. Last year, I was honored to receive the highest achievement award in photography at our school, which reflects commitment to excelling both on and off the field. I want to emphasize as football players, we are more than just the roles we play on the field, we are family supporting one another in countless ways beyond the game. Coach Jake has been an invaluable, invaluable resource for all of us, providing guidance that is truly irreplaceable. He embodies what we, what a role model should be, and I am here to show my support for him. Just as he has supported me throughout my journey at El Cerrito High School. Thank you.
Next public comment is Tristan Springer. Tristan Springer.
Hello. Uh, I just wanted to say bring Coach Jake back because he's a great person to be around and he's done a lot for the community and the school. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Devon Karnsivon.
My name is Darian, and I go to El Cerrito High School. And I came here today to support Coach Jake. And he a good mentor, leader. He always, he told me, if you want something, you gotta work hard for it. Yeah.
Next public comment is Josan Brosar.
All right. Hello, I'm here today to come support Coach Jake. His absence has been a big loss to the team. And I just want to say, bring Coach Jake back. He has been a big role model to a lot of us out here. Yeah, that's all.
Our next public comment is Cameron Bell.
I'm here today to support Coach Jake, and I believe that the El Cerrito football program needs Coach Jake back. He is a positive role model, and he created an environment where we felt valued and inspired, making us believe we can achieve anything. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Jaylen Smallwood.
I just came here to say free Coach Jake. And I also want to say that he's a big role model to us. He helps us on and off the field. He makes sure our grades are right, make, make sure that we're good and straight, even, even on and off the field. Anytime we have any problems, he makes sure, he checks on us and everything. I just want to say that.
Our next public comment is Coach Tim Johnson.
Good evening. I'm Coach Tim Johnson, assistant head coach at El Cerrito High School. Um, I just want to, uh, just point out the fact that not only do these, uh, players miss Coach Jake, but also our, our staff miss Coach Jake. I think, um, a lot of stuff go unseen and go unseen that, uh, that a lot of you guys not aware of. Coach Jake is not just a coach, a teacher, a role model. He's also a person that's, uh, that's been appointed leadership. He's not just involved with these kids' life on the field, he's also a savior, young man. I think every day that, uh, these kids come to practice and they leave practice, it's always, you know what I mean, obstacles of some of these guys getting home and returning safely. Think, uh, Jake does an excellent job, you know what I mean, as being a buffer on campus? Because I believe the, that a lot of the people that's, that's trying to move Jake out has also been the same people that's been reaching out to him, uh, on campus, you know what I mean, to buffer the student athletes, athletes and as well as the faculty. I believe that Coach Jake should be back reinstated because not only does he, uh, care for the program, but he loves the school. And I also, and I also believe that, you know what I mean, as I've been doing, uh, trying to, trying to, um, fill his shoes the last two and a half weeks, I realized that his shoes is, is, is bigger than I can ever imagine. I think, uh, Coach Jake spends, uh, most of his time, the first one at El Cerrito and the last one leave when the lights is out. I don't think that, you know what I mean, a faculty member or a staff member has, has ever just came outside and realized all the work that he puts in and all the things that he do. So with that being said, I would appreciate, not only for me, getting my life back, but I would love for Jake to come on back and, and finish what he started.
Our next public comment is Dior Antonio Denari Ingram.
Uh, I just want to say, uh, bring Coach Jake back. He a good person, he's a leader, and he's a good role model. And he's a great coach to me, and he's taught me a lot. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Lamorian Jones.
Hi. Uh, all I want to say is, um, Coach Jake, uh, he was, he a great role model to me and to the team and to the school. He made me a great person from where I was two years ago. Grateful about player, got me the offers and stuff like that. All I want to say is, uh, bring Coach Jake back. So, yeah.
Next public comment is Jamari Morris.
I'm up here in honor of Coach Jake, and I just want to say that Coach Jake is not just a coach, he's a father to all of us. And, uh, fa, uh, kids without their father doesn't go right, so I just want to say bring Coach Jake back.
Next public comment is Damilo Bigby.
Okay, so I am a football player at El Cerrito High School, as well as a student. Asking to express how I felt about Coach Jake. Uh, Coach Jake isn't just our football coach. He's a father figure to every player on this team. He has taught us more than just how to win a game. He's shown us the importance of discipline, respect, and staying focused on the right path. In a world where we can be easily misled or influenced by the wrong people, Coach Jake has always made sure we keep our heads straight. His guidance both on and off the field has shaped us into better athletes and better men. Losing him would mean more than just losing your coach. It would be losing someone who has been our mentor and a positive role model for all of us. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Sabion Javon Brandy.
Uh, my name is Sabion Brandy, and I just want to say, when I got to El Cerrito High School, Coach Jake helped me change my life for, I was going, I felt like I was going to go down a bad path if I didn't listen to Coach Jake and do the things that he told me. So, yeah, we need to bring him back. And, yeah, that's it.
Next public comment is Jonathan Kraft.
Hi, my name is Jonathan Kraft. Um, I'm a QB at El Cerrito High. I feel like Coach Jake should come back because he's done nothing but support the city of El Cerrito, support the school, and support the team. He always wants the best for everyone, would never wish down on someone. He's a great mentor for the team because he truly wants the best for the kids and will always have our back to them. He's a true key to the school and a true, true key to the team. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Vanessa Garcia.
Hello, everyone. My name is Vanessa, and I'm a team manager for the football team. Um, I think it's very unfair that Coach Jake is getting treated like this and not being able to go to the games or practice with us. Coach Jake isn't just a coach for most of these kids, he's more than that. He gets these kids online, makes sure they're all good and doing what they're supposed to be doing at school. He's always, he's always talking to the boys, giving them motivation and advice. These past football games have been very hard and stressful without Coach Jake. Not just for me as a football manager, for the whole football team. It's not, it's not the same without Coach Jake, and we need him back. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Malachi Lauren.
Uh, my name is Malachi Laverne. Today, I'm here to support Coach Jake. Can all my teammates and coaches please stand? Today, today, we are all here to support Coach Jake, somebody we all miss and love. Coach, Coach Jake's absence has taken a toll, took a toll on all of us. He's a great role model, he loves all of us and treats us the same no matter what race, white, black, or brown. He helps all of us academically, uh, giving us tutors and other things of that nature, introducing, introducing us to coaches and things, and things like that. He only wants the best for us, but with him being gone, it's not just affected us, but the schools, schools as well. Everybody misses his presence. I hope that Coach Jake will be able to return as, return as soon as possible. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Sarah Rincon.
My name is Sarah, Sarah. I've been a team manager for the football team this year. I met Coach, Coach Jake last year, and the first thing I noticed was how everyone admires and respects him. You can see many of the people here, they are students, parents, and fellow coaches. This is a family that has formed around him, and all of us look up to him because he is a symbol for discipline and an example for the youth to always be greater. We know he's, he enjoys teaching and that he's good at it, but his real passion is coaching. And all of us are here because of that. He has already marked a generation of young men that have grown to love football because of him and even got to college inspired by him. Practice is not the same anymore. We have all been waiting and hoping for him to be back with us. The players and the managers, we all have more pressure, more pressure on our shoulders during the games without him. It's sad that he is not allowed to coach this family because this is what we have become. That is why we ask you to allow him to be back and coach us. Thank you for your attention.
Our next public comment is Rodney Brown. Please unmute yourself.
Can you hear me, board? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
I'd say good afternoon, good evening, board. This is Rodney Almo Brown, a community advocate in the city of Richmond, California. Uh, I'm listening very, very intently to what the young men are saying, the football players are saying. And one thing that stands out is, uh, they saying, they're saying that Coach Jake is a father figure. And that speaks volumes in this, also a testimony to who he is as a human being. But one thing I don't think that we're all putting into strong consideration is the mental stability of where these children are at this current moment. Uh, no one has said anything pertaining to, uh, what is their psyche like? Uh, I don't know if you guys had any therapists come up there and speak with the children. I think that'd be something that the board should put in place, uh, moving forward in regards to the situation. But I think we should definitely, uh, put in perspective of where the children's psyche are at this present moment. I know it's been two, maybe three weeks I've heard the young lady say that. But even not just the practice by the football players, but the climate at El Cerrito itself uh, seems to be in disarray as well. So, board, think about that, uh, no matter what decision that you're rendering, but also think about the mental stability of the children. Thank you so much. Good evening.
Our next public comment is Avery Laba.
Hello, everyone. My name is Avery. I've been a football team manager for the past two years. Coach has been the most welcoming since my very first game as team manager. Coach Jake has not only been a coach figure to us, he's a mentor. I admire his work drive and how he's all about us as students. He's provided outlets for many of us to express ourselves outside of the classroom. This football team isn't the average football team. We are a family. This is my senior year, and each game of the season will soon become a memory that I will look back on in college. Not being able to experience this season with Coach Jake is truly upsetting. May Coach Jake get his justice. He has all of our best interests at heart, and we feel that warmth from him. Game days are extremely stressful without Coach Jake being there to give us that extra motivation. Coach Jake has the pure, has the most pure intentions to help students succeed and have better opportunities. This is not fair. We need Coach Jake back. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Angelica Barrios. Please unmute yourself.
Um, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello, I'm sorry, this is last minute. Um, I'm Angelica Barrios. I am a student athlete from John F. Kennedy, and I'm here for Coach Jake in Valencia. And then, um, I just wanted to come in here last minute. I'm here at a volleyball game. And I really care about my coach, and it sucks to hear that she won't be here for my senior year. I'm sorry. But I know there's many of us that really care for her and we want the best for her, and we would really appreciate if she could come back or, you know, get this position at Kennedy. And she's been here for many, many years, and I don't know why, I don't know where they're just trying to like take her out. She's literally, she always wears, but she puts others before us. And I really want people to notice that and, you know, appreciate everything she's done for us. Yeah, thank you for your time. Sorry, those aren't my words. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Gavin Thompson.
Hello, my name is Gavin Thompson. I am a student athlete at El Cerrito High School. And I am here in support of Coach Jake. He has done nothing but support and love this community. He sacrificed a lot for us and our teammates. And we love him. He's a great mentor to us. He makes sure we get the class and we make sure as we get our grades right. And yeah, that's all I got to say. Bring my Coach Jake.
Our next public comment is Teresa Griffin. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello, my name is Teresa Griffin, and I've been working at, in West Contra Costa for more than twenty years. All except five of those years have been at Stige Elementary. We've been thrust into a temporary campus through no fault of our own at Levonia Dejon. And we've been maintaining it's best we can, but we don't have enough space. The music teacher has to come and try to find the space to teach his students. Teacher's lounge, the makeshift cafeteria, wherever he can find to teach those students. We don't have a refrigerator even for, to put our, our lunch in. And just like at the Stige Cypress campus, sometimes the heat in our classrooms are often oppressive. Much money has been sent for us to get new books, new materials and supplies, makeshift furniture, of course. The students' food has to be heated at Dejon campus and then wheeled over to that E building for the students to be able to, to eat. We don't even ever know when we'll be able to go get any of our things that are still over at the Stige campus. We haven't been told that. We've been told maybe never, which would really be unfair to us. This has been a very stressful, but all, uh, time. But we all persevere, and we will continue to persevere as we get through this. However, we feel like we are being a bit ignored right now after all of the news media hoopla at the very beginning of things that happened that we had nothing to do with. Thank you. I'm complete.
Our next public comment is Charles Sutherland.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Charles Sutherland and I've had the privilege of being coached by Coach Jake for the past four years. I stand here tonight in support of Coach Jake, not only as a player on the El Cerrito Football Team, but as someone whose life has been shaped by his guidance, both on and off the field. Coach Jake is more than just a football coach. He's a mentor, a leader, and a role model. Under his coaching, I've learned the true value of discipline, accountability, and hard work. He always pushes us to be our best, not just on the field, but in the classroom too. What I find troubling is how Coach Jake is being treated during this process. It feels as, it feels as though he's being treated as if he is guilty until proven innocent, rather than the other way around. I understand the need for investigation, but I believe the way he is being treated is unfair. Coach Jake is someone that has always demonstrated integrity and a commitment to doing what's right. And he deserves to be treated with the same fairness and respect that he gives to everyone else. His absence would be a tremendous loss, not just to the team, but to the entire community. I hope you'll consider the positive impact he has, that he has made on all of us when making your decision and thank you.
Our next public comment is Kamari Harris.
Hello, my name is Kamari Harris. I'm here today to support Coach Jake. Coach Jake has always been a part of our, a huge part of our program and our athletic program. Coach Jake has helped us through many various tough times and has taught us many important life goals, such as educational goals and just scholarship goals. From my experience being coached by Coach Jake, Coach Jake has been nothing more than awesome to me and my peers around me. He has helped me grow as more a person, athlete, and a student. Our athletic program needs Coach Jake back. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Tyson Williams. Jamar Lincoln.
Uh, my name is Jamar Lincoln and I'm here to support Coach Jake. Uh, I feel like Coach Jake should be brought back because he is a leader to all of us young kids out here looking for guidance. Uh, he shows us the right path, trying to lead us down the right path. Because he don't want us to, you know, mess up and go down the wrong path in, uh, in Richmond. Cause you know, it's kind of tough out here. Uh, and yeah, he's just a great guy, great person. He's respectful to everybody. He respects everybody. So I just asking to bring him back, you know, that's it.
Everybody, we've hit one hour mark, so now the public comment drops to one minute. So just so those of you who haven't gone yet, but you turned in a form, it drops to one minute. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Sonia. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, my name is Sonia. I'm here for, uh, Kennedy High School for Coach Jackie. Uh, Coach Jackie has always been, um, a team player. She's always been motivational to other people. She's always helped, um, us as teammates and always manages to help us and make sure that we're always, um, are in good shape, that we're in good health. She's a, a very important coach. She's the reason why, um, I'm motivated to stay in soccer and volleyball and even softball. Um, I just wish her the best and, um, I want her to stay with us, us, uh, but yeah, that's.
Our next public comment is Michael Boyer.
Uh, my name is Michael Boyer, student athlete at El Cerrito High School. Coach Jake has been a major morado and father figure to us. The program is not the same without him. Bring Coach Jake back. Thank you.
Next public comment is Drew Shaver.
Uh, hi, my name is Drew Shaver. I'm a student athlete at El Cerrito High School. Uh, I just want to say free Coach Jake and that's all. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Terrell Turner.
Hello, my name is Terrell Turner. I'm a student athlete at El Cerrito High School. Coach Jake has always been more than a coach. His dedication to see us players accomplish things went far beyond the field. He taught us teamwork and importance and believing in ourself. Every practice, every game, he pushed us to be our best, not just as an athlete, but as an individual. Thank you. Free Coach Jake.
Our next public comment is Keon Harris.
Uh, I'm Keon Harris. I'm a student athlete at, uh, El Cerrito High School. All I wanted to say is Coach Jake helps us all on and off the field and free Coach Jake. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Jacqueline Barnes.
Hello, my name is Jacqueline Barnes and I am a parent of El Cerrito student. Um, we are here in support of Coach Jake and to say that this situation is becoming increasingly unusual, uh, by the day. Uh, it's clear that it's on the line of bullying when it comes to Coach Jake's treatment. It's clear that this is more of a power trip than a genuine concern for the youth of El Cerrito High, which is who is the principal? Uh, he's there to service the students. As he came into the school when he wasn't even interested in a principal position and had a mission to bring equity to the school, uh, according to his interview for Pleasanton Weekly Interview, who said there wasn't equality at El Cerrito? Um, asking students, can they describe their house and can he visit? That's totally inappropriate. Um, who's, who's to say that kids are going straight home after practice or after school when they're being followed by black cars? The support from Jacob Rinkin.
Our next public comment is Davina Teasley.
Hello, my name is Davina Teasley. One, I see y'all cut the time from two minutes to one minute. So I'm not gonna read my speech. I'm just gonna explain to you how you are, um, affect, affecting these children. All these kids sitting here at eight thirty at night is, is absurd. We out here fighting for our coach to get his spot back because y'all not out here helping our kids. Y'all not coming to make sure our kids mental is, in, is okay. We gotta sit here and pick up the pieces from people who not in, who don't have no favor for our kids whatsoever. If you're not gonna stand for something, nothing good, don't stand at all. That's just the bottom line. Jake is very much needed at our school, very much. Unless y'all gonna come take his place and I don't think nobody is gonna do that.
Our next public comment is Janisha Talton.
Hi, my name is Janisha Talton and I am here to represent the El Cerrito High School football parents and team and cheer. So my take on the whole situation is that it's, it's very heartbreaking that, that, that this is actually happening to our head coach Jake. Um, we would like for you guys to bring him back. It's very imperative that our children in, that our children get what they need from him. He's also a teacher of theirs. He's their head coach and we need him back. I'm not sure if you guys have come to one of our games or if you guys have seen how our kids have worked hard for your district. But not only do they work hard on the field, they work hard in the classroom. The fact that our children are being followed home by your superintendent is absurd. None of us stand for that. We're parents and we want our head coach back. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Toni Lynn. Toni Lynn.
Good evening. My name is Toni Lynn. I'm a parent of a student athlete at El Cerrito. And I'm making this statement in support of Coach Jake. I want everyone here to ask themselves, what is this really about? No one is harming our kids or putting them in danger. In reality, these individuals are investigating success and they don't like their results. Um, that's why they keep extending the investigation and hope that something will come up. The basis for this investigation, um, by the district and the school site is to seek the truth of students being harmed or being at risk or being, I'm sorry, um, being harmed or at risk of being harmed. And during this investigation, they are attempting to deflect their wrongdoing on the NCS, the NCS by saying that it's NCS driven. Does the NCS have time to investigate the 155 schools in the section for this? While they're discussing Coach Jake's employment status with the pub.
Our next public comment is Candy Ward.
Good evening. My name is Candace Ward. I'm a parent of a student athlete at El Cerrito High. I'm making this statement in support of Coach Jake. The San Jose Mercury News published an article on Coach Jake and the district failed to protect one of West Contra Costa Unified School District's employees by allowing the public to make unfounded and baseless speculative allegations. They brought up the video incident from 2021 in which he was found clear of all wrongdoing. What is stopping all media outlets from coming to the school and making speculative, speculative assessments of Coach Recon? You have now allowed him and his family to become target of public scrutiny and have not put, have now put their, um, safety at risk by leaking his address and remaining silent while all his, while all of this is happening. You are extending an investigation because you did not receive the answers you wanted initially. When Mr. Norton cleared Coach Recon of any improper conduct on September twenty-third, how is this fair to your employee to sit silent while he's being made to be a scapegoat to the?
Our next public comment is Tamika Goodwin. Tamika Goodwin.
Hi, my name is Tamika Goodwin. I'm a parent of a student athlete at ECHS and I'm making this statement in support of Coach Jake Recon. As a parent, I question the amount of district resources spent on investigation when there are huge budget cuts and those students are being harmed or at risk of being harmed. The fact that the independent investigation is being hired in light of the clear bias shown on Coach Rincon is telling and shows how many and resources are being wasted. How is NCS dictating this investigation when Norington repeatedly told Tenetta and Coach Rincon this has nothing to do with NCS and only after the unfairness and bias is brought up in this investigation and emails are sent calling out such unfair treatment of the student athletes and Coach Rincon is the investigation ramped up? Is this district ready to spend more resources investigating all sites for this very issue? There are approximately nine high schools and roughly 8,235 students in the district. There are 155 schools in the NCS, if it applies.
Our next public comment is Brittany Hernandez.
My name is Brittany Hernandez and I'm a parent of a student athlete at El Cerrito High School. And I'm making this statement in support of Coach Jake. The district has a bad history of hiring consultants and paying them a ridiculous amount of money for basically nothing in return. A consultant was paid $30,000 a month to oversee a project that got media attention. Another finally was fired after charging the district almost $200,000 a year for mindless training of students. Then we have Michael Booker who told the school board this past June, on June 27th, that he recommends face fencing and electric gates for El Cerrito costing $120,000 a year for, for safety concerns and schools have turned into prisons. What is what he recommends of safety? When EC had those kids in ski masks ambush the campus, the access point that Mr. Norington was supposed to be watching was vacant and he was nowhere around.
Next public comment is Juanita Montgomery.
Um, hello, everyone. I'm Juanita and I want to speak on behalf of Coach Jake. I truly believe that suspending him even just for a few days was a mistake. Coach Jake has consistently shown his love, dedication, and compassion, not only to his players, but to every student he teaches. This is about so much more than football. He teaches life lessons that extend far beyond the football field about perseverance, responsibility, and respect. These are values that his students will carry with them for the rest of their lives. Coach Jake has built a community of trust and mutual respect. He doesn't just coach to win games. He coaches to build character and shape future leaders. His commitment to his players and students is amazing and I think that, um, this needs to be looked over. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Leona Wilson.
Oh, hi, my name is Leona Wilson. I am a parent of a student athlete at El Cerrito High School. And I'm making this statement to support Coach Jake. All of these things about Coach Jake and the false accusations have been made every year. What we can say is that the current leadership at El Cerrito is facing a lot of allegations for unfair treatment, creating low moral and hostile workplace, retaliatory behavior, and a felony of lack of job security in their position. Staff, as though they are not being heard by the district. We are hoping this matter gets elevated and addressed. We, the staff, parents, and community feel as though we are not being heard. If we are heard, then Coach Jake would have been brought back yesterday with an apology to our program for how we have been made to feel by the district and school leadership. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Melani Garcia.
Hi, my name is Melani Garcia and I first want to start off by saying that Coach Jake is more than just a, a coach. He's a mentor and outlet for some and a lifeline for so many. Coach Jake has built such a strong bond with us and has taught. Coach Jake has built such a strong bond with us and has taught everyone great things. This whole issue is bigger than just football because it's connected to school. Part of the reason these kids perform well and listen in school is because of Jake. The kids love football and the thought of playing it and they make sure to act right in school. It's also a possibility that some of these kids will even go as far as to leaving the school if Coach Jake is gone, so that says something. Regardless, in and out of school, Coach Jake ensures that all of his players do good, stay out of trouble and carry themselves as the educated young men that they are. The love, dedication, compassion and support that Coach Jake gives is one of a kind and can never be forgotten. To him, this is more than just a job. We are his family. So hopefully after hearing my behalf and everyone else's, you guys will help us keep our coach.
Next public comment is Talia McCarthy.
I'm not sure if you've called my name yet, but it's Darlene Quinney. Have you? Not yet?
No ma'am. Hennessy's, or excuse me, staff. There's someone online too.
Hello, my name is Talia and I'm here to speak on behalf of Coach Jake's suspicion that all has been a difficult chapter for all of us. The players have spoken, coaches, and we all want our coach back. Coach Jake isn't just a football coach. He's much more than that. He's a role model, a leader and a mentor who truly cares about his students, both on and off the field. His passion extends beyond winning games. It's about shaping these young men into responsible, resilient individuals. He teaches them how to overcome adversity, work as a team and push beyond their limits to achieve greatness. His influence has created an environment where students feel seen, supported and valued. Coach Jake is their fully invested wellbeing and a development of his players. He instills discipline and accountability, but he does so with compassion, understanding that each player has a unique journey. In a world where positive role models are more important than ever, Coach Jake is a beacon which, a beacon which means to be a leader. One who not only demands excellence, but also guides players to become a better version of themselves.
Our next public comment is Tyler. Please unmute yourself.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
I'm a senior at Kennedy High School. I play basketball and volleyball. I haven't played, I haven't played under Coach Jackie for the softball. But for our soccer, but she's been like a really big part of the, the like community and not only that, the sports. So her not having a position, coming back from her offseason is really heartbreaking to not only me, but also the fellow students that here are at Kennedy. We would like her to come back, you know, be hired and, and be a part of the community and the school again. We just think it's unfair and this is our piece that we think should, she should come back and yeah, just come back and participate and help with the community and yeah.
Our next public comment is Ms. Wes.
Hello, board. I'm the parent, a former parent of a high school player, football player that went there last year. Also, I'm reading this on behalf of a parent this year. I'm a parent of a student athlete at El Cerrito High School and I'm making this statement in support of Coach Rincon. Mr. Norington has told staff that he doesn't care if there are any sports at EC. He is trying to gentrify and whitewash El Cerrito. He has said that the football team and parents are ghetto because they bring school spirit to the games by sharing their music with fans. He has also called our team momager a pit bull because she supports Coach Jake and she knows the law. He called her the derogatory name to his own staff where others heard the remark and said, Drake, sorry, Jake tried to stick his pit bull on me. She tried to call, she tried to cite the penal code and he said, I'm not scared. Is that how a leader speaks of his school's community?
Our next public comment is Alejandro Navarro.
My name is Alejandro Navarro. I was wondering if you can put the time back to two minutes?
Sorry, sir. What we do is
Okay, the reason for that on your agenda, it doesn't say nothing about you cutting time on public forum. And it's, I'm not an expert, but I think it's a violation of the Brown Act. It is an agenda. We want to trust you guys. So it's an investigation about a coach. We want to trust you guys. In order for you to change these, it has to be posted before 72 hours before the meeting. And if you want to change that during the meeting, it has to be brought in by the members of the school board. So it's a, it's a true violation of what I know of the Brown Act.
Okay, so what we do is on the agenda, it says that for the first 60 minutes, we have two minute public comment. And public comment is supposed to last approximately one hour. After that, I extended public comment by the pleasure of the board president. I extended public comment until we finish hearing everyone. But when we extend public comments so we can hear everyone, it drops down to one minute. So you are correct that on the agenda, it says, on the agenda, it says that public comment is to last approximately one hour and two minutes per person. After that, the president of the board can extend public comment and that extension of public comment is for one minute until the duration or until the president says, okay, that's all the public comment. So that's why it dropped to one minute. Push your little button right there. There, so I can hear you. There's a little fake, yeah, there you go. Go ahead.
It is, it is not posted on the agenda and it's supposed to be posted. And during that, once the public comment starts and you cannot change that because it's, it's right here. If you read it, it doesn't say you can change that to one minute per speaker. It is not posted.
So what happens is what you see in the agenda is public comment is to last 60 minutes at two minutes per speaker. After that, public comment can be extended by the pleasure of the board president or by motion for the entire board. I extend public comment so we can hear all of the comments that are online and in public because I don't want you not to have your time to speak to the board. But that is then cut down to one minute. So if you would like to have your one minute, sir, please go ahead. Would you like to have your one minute, sir? Staff, go ahead to the next comment. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Darlene Quinney.
Hello, my name is Darlene Quinney and I am a parent of two children that attended Steege School. I live on South 49th Street. When my son was in the first grade, he was diagnosed with a learning disability and placed in special education. And you know, once you're in that program, it's hard for you to get out. So he went all the way through the 12th grade in special education. But I mentioned that because today we're talking about Steege being anyway, we're talking about Steege being demolished. And I agree that Steege should be demolished, but I also feel that Steege should be rebuilt. Because of the asbestos, I believe that that's why my son ended up and other kids in the community ended up with an asbestos problem and placed in special education classes. Now also, my backyard is adjacent to the kindergarten yard and there was a flood, so Steege
That concludes public comment.
Thank you very much, everyone. We are now moving to we are now moving to agenda item B10 with your standing reports. We have asset and UTR. But before we do that, Dr. Hurst, would you like to say something?
Yes, just a few things I want to share. Thank you so much for all of your public comments. I wanted to just share a few things. One, with the parent that came up and spoke about the superintendent following students. Just wanted to correct that. At no time have I, as a superintendent, as a superintendent followed any student in this district or any other district. So I wanted to make sure we clarified that. And then also wanted to share with everyone listening that we are listening this evening. We are tracking all of your comments. We are following through appropriately as well and have been following through and will continue to follow through. But I just want to share also that there are things that we cannot speak about. You brought up some topics around the principal and around the coach as well. Those are personal matters and personnel matters so they can't be spoken about. But we do want to share with you that we are following through on all of those items. Thank you again for your public comment.
Thank you so much. We're now moving to agenda item B10, standing reports. We have asset and UTR. Is asset here? Is asset online? Not seeing asset. We now have UTR. Is UTR here? Is UTR online? They are online? Okay, UTR, go ahead. Five minutes.
Good evening, trustees, superintendent and community members. I'd like to start by sending a heartfelt thank you to Clerk Hanson-Zoll and President Smith Folds for standing with our Steege educators. After a long and difficult journey, these dedicated professionals have finally received the back pay they were promised by the district. The victory is about more than compensation. It's about acknowledging the hard work of educators who show up every single day to shape the future of our students. Thank you for ensuring that fairness prevailed. However, we must remember that our fight for equity and justice in education is far from over. We can't wait and it's clear that we must act now to support our special education students, especially those in full inclusion sites. After visiting 39 school sites so far, I've seen firsthand that many of our full inclusion classrooms simply don't have the resources to meet the diverse needs of their students. Our educators are doing their absolute best, but they need the tools, the staff and the specialized training to support every child. It's no secret that full inclusion, while a noble goal, requires robust support. We cannot allow our special education students to be left behind due to a lack of resources. We must fight to ensure that these classrooms are equipped to help every student thrive, no matter their learning profile. This is not just about compliance. It's about equity and justice for our most vulnerable students. I'd also want to take a moment to congratulate the district on discussing the community schools resolution. This resolution is more than just a policy. It's an equity strategy designed to support our most marginalized students. By investing in community schools, we are providing the wraparound services so that many of our students need to succeed. Whether it's mental health services, family support or academic assistance. This is how we dismantle the barriers that prevent our students from thriving. Our community schools or our communities deserve the schools that serve the whole child and this revolution is a step in that direction. Also, let's not forget that California is the fifth largest economy in the world. We have the resources to fully staff our schools, close the wage gap for educators and to stabilize our communities. Yet year after year, we see vacancies in critical roles such as counselors, nurses, psychologists that really leave our profession without the support that they need. They cannot stand while budget cuts and layoffs disproportionately affect our most vulnerable students, our immigrant students, unhoused students, LGBTQIA+ students and students of color. Our students can't wait for the funding and support that they deserve and neither can we. We appreciate the district's ongoing efforts, but the time for action is now. Our schools must be fully staffed. Our educators must be paid a living wage and our communities must gain stability. Together, we can create the schools that our students deserves, but we must collectively be willing to fight for it. And I encourage you to join us in that fight. Thank you.
Thank you so much, UTR. We're now going to asset. Ms. Harrison, you have five minutes. Thank you.
Hello, okay. Good evening. I probably won't take my whole five minutes. I just wanted to talk to you all about our ASAT and APAC. President Smith Folds, I want to thank you for the little things you do to make our board meeting feel welcoming with the candies, the waters. I feel that the parent group should also do that. So if there's resources entitled one that APAC, MDAC and PTAs can support you or support whatever board member chooses to support and make the families feel welcome, the community feel welcome. Those are very nice gestures and their hospitality. And some of the things I want to make sure that we do this year going forward. I would like, Dr. Hurst, I would like for you to ensure that our events and engaging activities that we have this school year, even though I know you're leaving in December, but if you can make sure before you leave that our activities are happening. We need, we want to make sure that there is funding. We did get to meet with the district staff. But it was late in the school year, so we just met with them. So it's not late, it's not when we would like to in August. But we didn't get clarity around our activities. So we want to ensure that we're engaging our black families. We would like to ensure that we have our Kwanzaa event, our college expo event, our black tour event, our honor ceremony, our graduation, our honors for our black parents. And we would also like to make sure we have our math and literacy night. And we want to make sure we're supporting our high school students with going to college and getting, making sure that they have access at their school sites to information about HBCUs. Because when they come from the tours, they don't have support from the counselors to make that transition. We also want to see more bridge programs, getting our college, our students ready for college. Our eighth graders, LaShante, well, somebody mentioned that last night, but I know it's coming, but we want to make sure it happens. And we also want to make sure our walkthroughs happen. The walkthroughs is really good to encourage all the community to see black parents and black students in our district and also learn about our culture and also see how much similarities we have with some barriers in education. The walkthroughs are really good for all the community, but we would also like APAC to be able to lead those walkthroughs. So and then another thing we would like to see is when you do professional development with, especially when you're talking about the over identification and suspension, we want the professional development to be something that the staff can really use to support keeping our and retaining our children into our school district. So please pick professional developments that have data showing that they can do this. Do not pick your friend or somebody who's not going to show that they can really change some educational outcomes with these trainings. So I think that's all I came to report out tonight. And I think we're on a slow but good school year and I'm very heavy hearted to see Dr. Hurst leaving in December because I had a lot of work for him to do. So thank you and good night.
Thank you so much, asset. We are now moving on to agenda item B11, agenda review and adoption. Anyone have anything? Go ahead. Trustee Phillips?
Good evening, everyone. I'm requesting that we move item C11, resolution number 2425-24. Resolution in the matter Resolution in the matter of supporting the district's community school transformation strategy.
Yes, sir. That's under consent. You're trying to move it out of consent? You want to pull it?
No, I'm, I'm re- I'm requesting that we move that resolution, which is C eleven, to B with the other resolutions.
Okay, so you want to move the resolution C eleven out of consent and move it to the other resolutions that we are getting ready to talk about now under, like, it would be like B seventeen.
Yes.
Is that correct? Can we do that? Can we do that? All right. All right, sir. We're moving it. Thank you. Anything else? Trustee Gonzalez Hoi?
Yeah, thank you. Just want to remind you that we are removing item E four from our agenda. That's because we need a little bit more time. It's coming to the next board meeting. That's E four.
Thank you very much. Anything else? Okay, we are approving the agenda with the following changes. We are moving C eleven to become B seventeen, and we are pulling item number E four. Seeing no objections? Go ahead, sir.
I just have a question. Is now the time if we wanted to pull something from section C?
From consent? Not yet. Almost. Not, it's not time yet. It's almost time.
Okay.
Mr. Phillips, sorry, trustee Phillips pulled something to move it to somewhere else, to move it to something that we're about to do. But if you pull something, it's going to go in the back of the agenda. If you pull something else, does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Any other changes? Seeing none, the agenda is accepted with those previous mentioned changes. We are now moving to, thank you, everyone. We're now moving to item B twelve, approval of minutes, August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, September the ninth, twenty twenty-four, and September the eleventh, twenty twenty-four. Do we have any changes? Seeing none, the minutes are now accepted with no objections. We are now moving to B thirteen, resolution number twenty-four twenty-five dash thirty-five, Indigenous Peoples' Day. Director Forrest, this is your item, ma'am.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Board President, Trustees, Superintendent Hurston, Community. Now therefore be it resolved that the West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Education hereby and henceforth recognizes the second Monday of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day and commend its observance to all members of the WCCUSD community.
Thank you so very much. Board, is there a motion?
For president, I move that we approve resolution number two four two five dash three five, Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Thank you. Board, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments? Seeing none, we'll go straight to the vote. Student trustee Espinoza Junior, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Oh, student trustee, I lost your last name. Tell me your last name.
Wilson.
Wilson. I was going to say Walker, but that's wrong. Student trustee Wilson, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, trustee Phillips, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Christian, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler, your vote?
Reckler, yes.
Thank you. Clerk Gonzalez Hoi, your vote?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you so very much. We are now moving to resolution number two four two five dash thirty-six, week of the school administrator. Director Forrest?
Now therefore be it resolved that the governing board of the West Contra Costa Unified School District recognizes the week of the school administrator and commends all school leaders in the West Contra Costa Unified School District for the contributions they make to successful student achievement.
Thank you so very much. Board, do I have a motion?
For president, I move that we approve resolution number two four two five dash three six, week of the school administrator.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Board, any comments? Seeing none, we'll go straight to the vote. Trustee Espinoza Junior, your vote, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Wilson, your vote, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Phillips, your vote, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Christian, your vote, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler, your vote, ma'am?
Reckler, yes.
Thank you. Clerk Gonzalez Hoi, your vote, sir?
Yes.
Thank you, and I'm a yes. We are now moving to item B fifteen, resolution number two four two five dash thirty-seven, Filipino American History Month. Director Forrest?
Now therefore be it resolved that the West Contra Costa Unified School District's Board of Education does hereby adopt resolution number two four two five dash three seven to recognize Filipino American History Month and to mark the achievements and contributions of Filipino Americans in West Contra Costa County and throughout the United States of America.
Thank you so much. Board, do I have a motion?
For president, I move that we approve resolution number two four two five dash three seven, Filipino American History Month.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Great. Thank you. Board, any comments? Thank you. We're moving straight to the vote. Trustee Espinoza Junior, your vote, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Wilson, your vote, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Phillips, your vote, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Christian, your vote, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler, your vote, ma'am?
Reckler, yes.
Thank you. Clerk Gonzalez Hoi, your vote, sir?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you very much. We're now moving to resolution item B sixteen, resolution number twenty-four twenty-five dash thirty-eight, National Bully Prevention, Bullying Prevention Month. Director Forrest?
Now therefore be it resolved that the West Contra Costa Unified School District's Board of Education does hereby recognize October twenty twenty-four as Bullying Prevention Month and October sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, as Unity Day and encourages all educators, staff, students, and community members to create a world without bullying through actions of kindness, acceptance, and inclusion.
Thank you very much. Board, do I have a motion?
For president, I move that we approve resolution number two four two five dash three eight, National Bullying Prevention Month.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Board, do we have any comments? I have a quick comment. Remember to wear orange on the sixteenth when you do, it's World Kindness Day or Kindness Day, and you're supposed to wear orange, just so you know. All right, to the vote. It is the sixteenth, right, Director Forrest? Okay. Kindness Day is the sixteenth. Mr. Phillips, you have a comment?
I do have a comment. Um, are we timing ourselves today or?
Um, let's keep it, keep it short, but like minute, minute and a half.
Thank you. Um, I know that these resolutions are aspirational, but we do have a problem with bullying in our schools. Um, my daughter was transferred from her school to the virtual school because she was bullied. Actually, all of my kids have been bullied in district schools. They all still attend district schools, but this has been a problem that my family has faced. This has also been a problem that other families has faced, have faced as well. So not just for this item, but for other items as well. But specifically speaking to the issue of bullying, I've talked to Dr. Hurst about it with my child. We actually have to do something, not just pass resolutions, not just talk, but we actually have to do something. All too often, we pass these resolutions and we say things and they sound really good, but we don't really do a dang thing about what we're passing resolutions about. And in this instance, there's an issue that affects my family, and I could speak to it very personally, and I'm sure others around the district can as well.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll go straight to the vote. Mr. Espinoza Junior, your vote, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson, your vote, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Phillips, your vote, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Christian, your vote, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Clerk Gonzalez Hoi, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you, and I'm a yes. We are now moving to item number seventeen. If you're following the agenda, it's C eleven, resolution number twenty-four twenty-five dash twenty-four, resolution in the matter of supporting the district's community school transformational, transformation strategy. I believe that this is Ms. Sigler's. Ms. Sigler, this is your item, ma'am.
Thank you. Whereas the West Contra Costa Unified School District recognizes the positive impact of community schools evidence-based strategies can have on schools and communities, and whereas the West Contra Costa-
I'm so sorry to interrupt you, Ms. Sigler. You don't have to read the whole resolution. You just have to read the last there.
The last part. I was going to give you the first and the second. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, then I messed you up. So I apologize. I just didn't want you to read three pages by yourself.
None of us do. Thank you. Um, now therefore be it resolved that the West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Education approves this resolution and make a commitment to identifying future funding of community schools in collaboration with partnering Contra Costa County, the cities of West Contra Costa serves, the state California, philanthropic resources and entities at the federal level to ensure success of this policy.
Thank you very much. Board, do I have a motion?
President, I move that we approve resolution number two four two five dash two four, resolution in the matter of supporting the district's community schools' transformation strategy.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second that.
Thank you so very much. Any comments? Seeing none, we, oh, go ahead. So I have a couple of comments. Let's put a minute and a half on the clock, please. I'm going to start to my right and work my way around. Yes, sir.
When are we asking questions?
Hold on there, Fran. Do we ask questions on the resolution? Yeah, I think we do. You got some questions, Fran?
I do.
Yeah, all right. Let's roll it back. So let's see, we did a motion. We probably had a motion. Was it properly second? It was. Board, do you have any questions? Trustee Phillips, you have questions? And then we'll go to the comments. We're a little out of order. Go ahead, sir.
Um, this question or these questions are for, uh, Dr. Moses. You got your doctorate. You got it, right? Okay, it's not on the way. You got it. All right. Okay, you got it, Dr. Moses. Does this district still have to make budget cuts?
Yes.
If this district increases funding for community schools without obtaining new revenue, will this district have to make even deeper budget cuts?
Yes.
Thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll go to comments, starting with trustee Reckler. If we could put a clock on, ma'am, if you could wait for the clock. One minute, thirty seconds, and then we'll walk away. We'll work our way around. Go ahead, trustee Reckler.
Thank you. Uh, so I, again, I really do support community schools. I think they are marvelous, and we should have them, and we've always, we've always had them. However, in this resolution, I continue to have concerns about the phrase identify future funding. And I'm concerned because resolutions are commitments, or they should be commitments. And the expectation is going to be is that the district is going to deliver. And for the positions in this resolution, it's a minimum of five million dollars, and that will escalate over time. And finding this money might be easy. The state might give it to us, and we might not have, the district might not have any problem. However, it might also not be easy to identify this money. And there may be very significant reductions that need to happen to fulfill the financial obligation that's in this resolution. And I don't feel good about doing that. If you can think of a different way to phrase this, to us, to assign it to someone, to work on it, um, but not to have it written in this way, I would be happy to support it. But as it's written now, I'm really concerned about a potential future liability for the district, and I will be abstaining from the vote. Thank you.
Thank you. We're looking this way, Clerk Gonzalez Hoi. I'll call on you last. Uh, we, um, sorry, trustee Christian, do you have a comment? Okay, we're going to go around towards trustee Phillips. Trustee Christian, go ahead.
Yes, um, just say I'm in support of community, community school. Uh, but we just have to look for funding in other places. That means we have to do our due diligence. And, um, there's grants out there. There's a lot of money out there. We just have to go get it. So I am in one hundred percent supporting community school.
Thank you, trustee Christian. Student trustees, you have any comments? Go ahead, trustee Wilson.
Yeah, so first I want to express my strong support for community schools initiative, which I believe is essential for success of both students and the community that we serve. Community schools are more than just a place for academic learning. They provide students and families with critical resources like mental health services, family support, and after-school programs. I truly want to find a way that we can integrate this while not affecting too much of the budget that is currently in place. I agree with trustee Reckler that we need to think about a way to get more funding from possibly the state on this matter. And overall, by fostering these partnerships and focusing on the holistic student support, I believe that we can make a lasting impact on our students' success as well as the well-being of our communities. Thank you.
Thank you very much, student trustee Espin- nope, student trustee Wilson. Thank you. Trustee Phillips, go ahead.
I would like to make a motion, and that motion is that we change a few words. Um, and I'm in the resolve clause. What I would like to change is future funding of, so to identifying future funding of, just the three words, future funding of, to new funding for. So what it would read is, instead of reading with part, instead of reading to identifying future funding of community schools, it would read to identifying new funding for community schools. Does that, does that make sense?
It's clear, sir. Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I second the motion.
Thank you. That motion has now been moved and properly seconded. We are going to take a vote on that motion for the word change. Trustee Reckler, you have something to say about the motion?
Yes, would we be able to ask questions about the change in wording, please?
You're going to ask questions through me to trustee Phillips about the word change?
Sure, whatever, whatever works.
Go ahead.
So I'd like to understand what new funding means.
Trustee Phillips, the question?
To you. What does new funding mean to you?
New funding means funding that the district is not currently receiving. So for example, uh, Mr. Christian spoke about grants. That's an example, but it means to me new funding, new funding to me means funding that the district is not currently receiving.
Is that understood, trustee Reckler?
Yes.
Any other questions about the motion? No further questions? Clerk Gonzalez Hoi, go ahead.
Thank you. I think that, um, I would like to clarity as well on that. Because if the state renews the grants, it is technically just continuation of funding. So wouldn't it stop us from being able to use that funding if we're specifically saying new funding that the state, that the district doesn't currently get?
Trustee Phillips, your response?
I don't understand the question.
The question is, with your new phrasing, if we get a continuation of the funds from the state, would that prohibit us from then using it because it falls outside of what you said, which is new funding? Because that is a continuation of funding. Am I correct, Clerk Gonzalez Hoi? Is that understood, trustee Phillips?
So let me try to answer it this way. Um, if what you're asking me is, am I against funding that's already being used for community schools in the future to be used for a community school? for community schools? So like, for example, we have a grant and it's for community schools and we get a gr, the grant in the future, can we continue to use that? I say yes. So I, I, I don't know if that answers your question. Does that answer your question?
Yes and no. Um, I mean, I think that because you said new funding, technically, we are already getting the funding and if it gets extended, it's not new funding, it's just continuation of the funds. Right? So I just didn't want to estimate, like, a problem with the language that we're using to stop us from doing that. But I think that I understand your intention and I think staff understands your intention. So if we get continuation of the funding, it's just, that's what we'll continue to use for community schools. If we don't, if the state doesn't continue the grant, what I'm hearing you say is that we will find outside funding not currently in our budget.
I, I'm not, just to be very clear, I'm not trying to take anything away that's currently being used for community schools. Um, so I'm trying to answer very clearly. I just wanted to make sure I understood. But any money that is currently being used for community schools, I'm not saying or advocating for that money to not be used for community schools. If we get money or a continuation of funding that we're already receiving for community schools, I'm not saying that that money should be diverted away from community schools. All I'm saying is that, um, because when I read this resolution, I feel that what it is saying is that more funding is going to be used for community schools, which is fine. I just want to make sure that that funding is new funding, as in funding that we don't currently have. So we don't have to make the deeper budget cuts that I asked, um, Dr. Moses about earlier.
So let me understand what I think I just heard you say, because it's a little different than what I thought it was in my mind. You're saying that we have a bucket of money that we use for community schools that contains grants, it contains whatever type of funding that we have. If that money is not extended, or like say a grant is not extended, or the state doesn't give us more money for community schools, what you're asking for is that we find new sources of money to fund community schools, but that new source of money cannot come from other places in the budget. Is that clear? Is that what you're saying?
I mean, in all honesty, if that comes to pass, I'm not even gonna be on the board. So you guys could do whatever you want. But what I suggest, based on our budget issues, i- is that the phrasing in this resolution be changed to new funding for, um, based on the reasons that I just gave. So I mean, if folks want to, I'm making this up, if folks want to, and I'm not saying anybody would do this, but if folks wanna cut arts to do full-service community schools, the board that does that, that's on them. I'm just, I don't know, I think I'm clear what I'm, what I'm getting at.
Clerk Gonzalez Hoy, you had something else to ask? I'm not clear. I think I'm, I need you just to, I need, can you, okay. The scenario that I gave, that I gave about just a second ago, like if we don't have more funding in the pocket that we have now, the bucket that we have now for community schools, your phrasing is saying that we cannot use any other budgetary bucket that we have now. We have to go out and find other funding, new funding. So we can't use the art grant, for example, hypothetical. We can't use the art grant for community schools because that's already allocated in the budget. We have to go out and find new funding. Is that accurate?
So the truth is, this is a resolution. The board can do whatever it wants to do six months from now or seven months from now. This is not binding. Um, the board theoretically could use every dollar it has for community schools if it wants, regardless of what this resolution says. And that actually kind of goes to the point I was making earlier about bullying, right? We say all these things in these resolutions and don't do them. Because these resolutions are not actually binding. But to the extent that they are statements, the statement that I feel most comfortable with us making is that we find new funding, um, is that we work to identify new funding for community schools because we do have budget issues. Um, that's, that's just my opinion.
Okay, Clerk Gonzalez Hoy, you do have something. And then after that, I would love, Dr. Moses, if you had something to help add to this, it would be appreciated. Go ahead, um, Clerk Gonzalez Hoy.
Thank you. I mean, just to, to be honest, I think that's the intention of the committee who created this. And I don't, I don't think that the change in language changes the intention. Uh, I, President, I was saying that the change in language, I don't think changes the intention of how, of why it was written. So to me, it's the same thing that was already, we're already trying to do. Because if the community schools grant goes away, technically, anything is new money for community schools. Because that money's going away. So, um, I actually think I'd be fine accepting his change in language as an amendment to my original motion, because to me, it doesn't actually change the intention. I actually agree with what he's saying. The grant goes away, then we have to find the funding anyways.
Thank you for that. Um, Dr. Moses and then Superintendent Hurst, Dr. Moses, go ahead.
I agree with, uh, Clerk Gonzalez Hoy. I just want to point out that there is nothing that prevents the board from allocating funds to any initiative. Um, you just bring that forward and we make the adjustments requested by the board. So there is no there's flexibility all around. I do like the term new money, because if the grant is renewed, it expires. Once it's renewed, that's new money. I like, um, using that term because we are making continual cuts and we can't guarantee that we won't need to make five million in cuts in order to satisfy this resolution. Although it's, um, a resolution, it is legally binding once it's signed by the board.
Okay. So let's restate your motion. Oh, I'm sorry. Hold on, before you do that, Dr. Hurst, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm just gonna bring to the board's attention, if the language moves forward that says new funding for, it would need to be changed in two spots. Uh, one in the second to the last paragraph, where it says, whereas the district commits to identifying new funding for, and then the very last paragraph where it says now therefore be resolved. So there's two spots that would have to be changed.
Okay. Hold on a minute. Here we go. Alright, so let's go to Trustee Phillips and then we'll go to Trustee Reckler. Trustee Phillips, go ahead.
Um, I just want to amend my motion to, uh, include what Dr. Hurst just said. Um, thank you for catching that.
Okay, hold on one second for the amended motion. Trustee Reckler, you have a question on the motion that we're talking about now?
I do, thank you.
Go ahead.
If I may ask either you or Dr. Moses, just a scenario. New, the grant ends. Gone. And we have this structure set up under the new wording. Uh, as far as I could tell, unrestricted general and LCAP might be sources. Are those new funding sources? Or are they old funding sources for community schools?
That is a great question. I think that it, that that brings in that flexibility. We could say that, um, LCFF is a new funding source because it wasn't previously funding that initiative. Um, it is not new money, but it would be new funding because it would be coming from a new place. Uh, the caveat there is we need to prioritize in the LCAP plan and we need to move five million out in order to put five million in. So the spirit of the, the spirit of the language would hold true if we were to use LCFF, I believe.
Go ahead.
If I may ask Dr. Moses another question, which is same scenario, state cuts funding, state budgets in turmoil, no more money is coming. Under the language that's printed here, identifying future funding, what's the difference in how funds might be allocated?
I think the difference comes from the leadership of the board. And if the board chooses to pass this resolution and makes the community schools' funding their priority, then it's the action of the board that's going to identify the new funding in years to come. So I'm not sure that I can answer that question other than to say that I'm really hopeful with that language. I hope new funding does come and it doesn't cause a need for cuts. But as it stands now, if the funding were expiring tomorrow and we pass this resolution, we'd need to...
I'm sorry, would we, you repeat that, we, we need to?
Oh, we would need to reduce five million in order to add five million to make it happen. So, um, that is the decision that we make with everything that we fund. That's why we try to budget based upon district priorities, so that the priorities are funded first. So what this resolution says to me is that this is going to move high up on the priority list, which means that something else is likely, unless we have additional revenue or new funding, going to be moved out.
Trustee Reckler, does that answer your question? I'm sorry, Dr. Moses.
Alright, I, I'll just, I'll just hold here. Maybe, maybe that raised hand will answer my question.
Trustee Phillips, your question, thank you.
So I gotta have a comment and a question. Um, and I would like, if you can give me this space to say this, because I think it's helpful. Um, a moment ago, I was asked what did I mean by the motion that I made? And I've just heard people assign kind of their own definition to what I was saying, even though I said what I said. And the board seemed to understand what I meant by that. Um, when I was saying new funding, I meant funding that we don't currently have. That is the intent of, of my words. That's what I said earlier. Um, if the word funding is an issue, um, and folks would feel more comfortable with the word revenue, so to identify new revenue, um, I don't know if I'm parsing at this point. Um, but the ultimate goal is to not have to cut to not have to make additional cuts to increase funding for community schools. Or to not have to make additional cuts to maintain funding for community schools. So that's what I mean. I'm sitting here and we could talk around me in this space if we want, but that's what I mean. That's the intention of the motion. If folks don't agree with it, it's okay to vote no. But that's the intention of the motion. Um, if there's a more clear way to say it, I'm definitely open, um, to just using somebody else's language. It doesn't even have to come from me. But I think that in this space, everybody understands what I'm trying to do.
Thank you, Trustee Phillips. Any other questions or comments? No? Trustee Phillips, restate your motion, please.
To change the language from to identifying future funding of community schools to identifying new funding.
Is there a second?
And matter of fact, I would just like to say new revenue, because maybe that's even clearer, because so I'm gonna, I'm, I would like to amend the motion to say, I mean, that motion was already seconded, but I, I would like to actually make a new motion.
So we can take that motion off, because we had to correct it anyway, because it was, remember it had to be in two places? So if you want to strip that motion and then make a cer, a very new motion, go ahead.
I, I don't want to strip the, the first motion.
You want to make an amendment to the first motion?
I just want to make a second motion.
You're gonna put a second motion on the floor?
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead.
And that second motion, and we will be changing this in two places, not just one. And we will be changing the language from, um, to identifying future funding of community schools to identifying new funding for community schools. And that change will be made in two places.
So, sir, you just told me that you wanted to change the word revenue from funding to revenue, but did I just hear rev, funding again?
I did say it, you know what? I'm sorry. So the motion is to identifying new revenue for community schools.
And that's changes in two places. Now, that's two motions on the floor. So we, we need a second for that motion that we just heard. And that motion was to change the language, to change the language, and I'm gonna get it wrong, but the motion that Trustee Phillips just said, that motion, and it has the word revenue instead of funding, and it, and we change it in two places. And it changes, it changes to say new money, um, instead of, or new funding.
New revenue.
New revenue, new revenue instead of new funding. We have to vote on that motion first, but that motion has to have a second. Is there a second?
Reckler will second.
So now we have a second on the motion that Trustee Phillips just read. Now we're gonna go and we're gonna vote on that motion. Trustee Phillips, read it one more time for me, so everybody will hear it.
We are changing the language to read to identifying new revenue for community schools.
Thank you so very much. Alright. Sir, you have a question on that motion? You have a comment? Okay, we're moving to comments on the motion that we just, the second motion. Go ahead, Clerk Gonzalez Hoy.
Thank you. Um, I appreciate Trustee Phillips clarifying it a few times. So I definitely was under the wrong impression of his interpretation. Um, I don't know how to feel about this piece, because if we don't find new revenue outside of what currently exists within our budget, what happens to the community schools program? Which we have said is a pillar of our schools to function. So we run the risk of the community schools program disappearing. If there's, when in comparison, I think that the intention of the committee and this community schools, um, I forgot the name of it, um, committee, for lack of better words, in the district. The intention is to ensure that the program is gonna continue decades to come. Doesn't matter whether the state is providing additional revenue or continuing the grant, that we are making a commitment in our budget through our values, that this is critical and important for our schools. So because of that, I'm gonna vote no on the motions by Trustee Phillips. And I hope that the rest of the board votes no on them. Because we have made a commitment, and we talked about it at the last meeting, which is why we were not changing the language. Because we are saying we're gonna find the funding. Whether that means cutting something that is not as important as this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Trustee Reckler, I see your hand, and then I'll circle back around. Trustee Espinoza Junior, Trustee Reckler, go ahead.
You know, I, my interpretation is different, which is that it focuses on new revenue. It doesn't prevent you from using district funds, but it focuses on new revenue streams, which I think should be the focus, honestly. And then you can come back in later and say, okay, we found four million in new. It feels to me that's what you're committed to in this resolution, and then there can be another discussion. Committed to in this resolution, and then there can be another discussion later. That's not, I mean, it's not. You know, you're not tied to it, but it gives some financial flexibility is my reading of how this language. Sounds to me.
Okay, I see you, sir. Uh, S- Mr. Trustee Espinoza Jr., go ahead, sir.
Thank you, um. Understanding from hearing from both sides, I think that, um. I agree with Mr. Gonzalez-Hoy that we vote no. Um, the reason for that is because understanding not only from the board, but from also Dr. Moses. Is that future, the word new falls into future. So we're throughout the future, throughout this process, we're gonna find new funding. Whether that's gonna be from cutting, whether that's from new grants, new funds, revenue, however you want to put it that way. Um, my understanding was to make this more as a simpler terms. So that would be have a more clear and understanding as a board and, um, for the cabinet as well. So, um, therefore I will be voting no.
Thank you, Mr. Espinoza Jr. Trustee Phillips, go ahead.
So. Once again, I don't believe that this resolution. Requires the board to do anything. Um, folks may have a different opinion than I do, but I honestly don't believe. The board is required to do squat regardless of how this vote. Goes. If the intention. Is to find new funding. Or to find new revenue to support community schools. Then I don't see the problem in saying that. Now, if the intention really is. To commit the board. To, um. A budget decision. Eight months before the budget is really due. Because of the underlying intention is to say. Well, regardless of what happens. If we have to cut to get this going or to, we're gonna cut. If that's what really is the intention underlying all of that. That's a budget decision. And this is not really, uh, I mean, like a real budget decision, like this is our budget. We are going to cut this to do this. Which the board can do. But that's not. What this resolution is supposed to be. Um, and that's not how resolutions are normally used. So if that is really the, the, the meaning behind all of this. Then I suggest. You just write a resolution that says that. That this is important to the board. And regardless of whether we get money from the state or not. If we, we, we're gonna move forward, even if that means that we have to cut other things, because that's transparent. And if that's what. The, um. Folks who wrote this or who are offering this really mean. They should say that because that's not what this resolution says. What this resolution says is actually more akin. To what I'm trying to change it to. But if I'm just totally off. Which I may be. Just change the resolution and say what you really mean. But again, I don't. I don't think passing the resolution with my change. Prevents the board, I wouldn't. Agree with it. I'll just be a parent six months from now, right? But I don't think six months from now, it stops the board from doing. Anything. You know, if it wants to use money from X to pay for this. It can. Um, but if, again, if, if coming right out of the gate, that's what is really going on here. Just change the resolution to say that so it's transparent. That's my opinion. Thank you for hearing me out.
Mr. Wilson, go ahead.
I think of, uh, instead of. Uh, future, um, funding or new funding. I believe there should be a specific time period or. And or specific steps. That are needed to be taken or specific time period needed to be taken. Of, um, trying to find new fundings or new revenues. And if that time period runs out, or if those steps are all done and no luck. Then you can go into possible cuts, but I feel like. The resolution needs. Much more, uh, rewrites in terms of a specific time. Period of trying to get new funding, but then if that doesn't work out, then you can go into, okay. Looking at things that we could possibly cut.
So we can have up to three motions on the floor? Are you making a motion, sir?
Yes, I'm sorry, that was, we have three motions, so.
We already have three?
Trustee Phillips.
Are they all from trustee Phillips? Oh, plus the one.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, sir. We have three motions on the floor, so we have to vote on. The last one first. Yours is not the last one. Trustee Phillips is the last one that has the revenue wording in it. Okay. All right. We are going to vote. Seeing no more comments, we're going to vote on the last motion. Which was trustee Phillips. Word changed, language changed to say revenue. And to say. New revenue for instead of new. Future funding in. Okay. All right. Everybody understand what we're voting for? All right, here we go. Trustee Espinoza Jr., your vote, please.
No.
Thank you. Trustee Wilson, your vote, please.
No.
Thank you. Trustee Phillips, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Christian, your vote?
No.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Gonzalez-Hoy, your vote?
No.
And I'm a no. That one fails. Now we're moving to the second motion that. Trustee Phillips has on the floor, but Mr. Wilson, would you like to put another motion on the floor?
Yes.
State your motion, sir.
My motion is that. The language is changed to. Have a six-month period of finding new. Funding opportunities. And if that runs out. Then we look at possible cuts.
Is there a second to Mr. Wilson's motion? Clark Gonzalez-Hoy?
I'm not seconding. I would be willing to accept that amendment, but I was wondering if I could prop- propose. Different language to Mr. Wilson to consider that encompasses what he's trying to do.
Mr. Wilson, Clark Gonzalez-Hoy is gonna ask you for a friendly amendment and he's gonna state his motion now. Or his amendment to your motion. Go ahead, sir.
It'll be his second on the amendment, yeah. I'm getting confused on the, um. What I would propose is that we spend the next two years looking for outside revenue that could. This is not the language I proposed, but, uh, we would spend the next two years looking for outside revenue. If that does not happen on the third year when this grant's supposed to be over, that's when we look at encompassing, looking at. Outside revenue and inside revenue, which I think takes care of the piece that you're talking about. But then the problem with waiting six months on the third year is that then, as Dr. Moses is probably thinking. The we're gonna, she's gonna start working on a budget be- way before that. So if all of a sudden we have to make cuts in January around five million, it would be chaos. Um, so. I think this encompasses what you're trying to say. So what I would propose instead is. The board. Spends. The board and staff spend and community. Um, the next two years looking for outside revenue. In order to continue to fund community schools. And I think, and after that, just the current language of, uh. That we have in the resolution.
So.
That was crappy, but I hope that helps.
So what Clark Gonzalez, what Clark Gonzalez-Hoy is saying is to include the language with a time. And that time is two years looking for outside funding. If outside funding is not found and within those two years. Then we go to the language that we have, which is we're gonna make it happen.
Okay.
That's the summary of it.
I do have one quick question. What, what was, um, kind of the thought process of the, uh, behind the two years, like? Is that like, how you feel is a significant, uh, um. A good amount of time that could be used to look for new opportunities?
I think that I know the answer to this, but I'm gonna go through myself to the clerk, but what I think he's gonna say is that the grant is still in place for two years. So we're all good for two years. It's that third year that we're gonna have to make some decisions. And so we're gonna take the two years that we know we're cool. We know we have the money to do all the things that we need to do for community schools and use that time to really go out there and look to cover us. If we're not covered in the third year. Dr. Moses, did I do okay with that? Great. Clark Gonzalez-Hoy, is that what you were saying? Clerk Wilson, Clerk Wilson. Trustee Wilson, did I make that clear?
Yes, with that, I agree with, um.
Clark Gonzalez-Hoy?
Yes.
So then the motion that's on the floor is that we're adding inside the language that we're taking two years. That we have the grant to make sure that we're looking for outside funding. Within that two years, if we don't have it. Then we turn around and revert back to the language in. The resolution. Is that cool?
Yes.
All right, hold up. You gotta get a second. Do I have a second on that?
Um, I'm accepting his amendment.
He, you're accepting the amendment? That makes that a second. Okay, uh.
You just need to get, um, I think trustee Christian seconded my initial motion, so he also just needs to agree.
Trustee Christian, do you agree with the amendment that we just had, which is adding the two years? Adding the language of two years, and then if we don't find the outside funding in two years, we revert back to the. Resolution as written. Do you agree with that?
Yes.
Great, you agree with that. I see you, sir. And then, so. We are on a parliamentary roller coaster. So we are on. So you have a third motion on the floor? Or we are just making that your motion?
Yeah, it's just an amendment.
It's an amendment to your motion. So we still have two motions on the floor.
We only have two, yes.
So now we're gonna go, you're good because yours got in. But it got in under the umbrella of Clark Gonzalez-Hoy, okay? He made it. You added something to it. He accepted your amendment to it. Trustee Christian then said, because I did the sec- because trustee Christian did the second, he's like, cool, I agree with what y'all said with the amendments. Did that make sense?
Yes.
Perfect. Trustee Phillips, are you talking about this amendment right here? Or this motion right here, sir?
Um, I'm not sure what I'm talking about, um. Because I'm hearing two different things.
Okay.
I'm hearing. Trustee Gonzalez-Hoy say something. And then I'm hearing you say something that they're not saying. I'm hearing them say something, then I'm hearing you say. After two years, we revert back to the language. I, I, I wanna know exactly. What the motion is from the people who are making the motion. So what is the lan- how is the language gonna read now?
Clark Gonzalez-Hoy. Correct me if I'm wrong. The language of your motion is going to include what. Student trustee Wilson said was a timeframe. And that timeframe. That you and trustee Wilson has agreed upon, have agreed upon is two years. Trustee Clark Gonzalez-Hoy, could you restate your motion? That has the amendment from trustee. Wilson and that has been properly seconded by trustee Christian.
And just to clarify, um, what I'm asking. Is for you to say exactly how the language is going to read.
Yes, thank you. I was trying to write it as you were saying that. Um, so the way that it would read, if we look at the last paragraph, it would say. Now therefore be resolved that the West Country Californiaified School District Board of Education. Approves this resolution and makes a commitment to identifying new revenue for the next two years. And if we are unsuccessful finding new revenue, the board makes a commitment. To identifying future funding for community schools, which is the current language that is on the last paragraph.
Trustee Wilson, you seem okay with that? Trustee Christian, are you okay with that? Good, it has been moved, it has been properly seconded. We are now going to the vote. Of trustee Phillips. Motion and his motion in this one. Had the words funding in it and it had the word. From to, what was it? His original motion?
I, I actually withdraw that motion because.
Great.
There's.
No explanation. I appreciate you. Do you have another one that you're gonna put on or you just withdraw that one?
God bless you.
He does, Fran. Okay, so you good? Great. We are now voting on the motion from clerk Gonzalez-Hoy. That has been properly seconded by trustee. Christian, we are now moving to the vote, seeing no comments.
Present, just to clarify, sorry, it also includes the amendment.
It includes the amendment from trustee Wilson. With the two-year time. Okay, here we go. We are now moving to the vote. Trustee Espinoza Jr., sir, your vote on this motion?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee. Student trustee Wilson, your vote on this motion?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Phillips?
No.
Thank you. Trustee Christian?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, no.
Thank you. Trustee Clark Gonzalez-Hoy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, that passes. Okay. We are now moving to consent items. What are y'all gonna pull? Go ahead, trustee Reckler. Fran, this is your time too. Uh, trustee, student trustee Wilson, this is the time to pull something off consent if you wanted to. Trustee Reckler, go ahead.
Thank you. C five Harvest Consulting and High Expectations. C six ratified contracts curriculum associates. C eight legal. And C. Thirteen, the menstrual equity policy. Thank you.
Trustee Wilson, do you have anything you were gonna pull?
In addition, I would like to pull item C two. Ratification of, uh. Negotiated non-bond change order.
Thank you. Anything else? We are gonna accept the consent pulling C two, C five, C six, C eight, and C thirteen. Seeing no objections. Consent id- consent calendar is approved. Consent items are approved. We are now moving to the superintendent's report.
Can we pull it up, please? And while we're waiting for that to come up. Just for the record. I just want to speak, um, about my executive team who are sitting here. They are people of high integrity and character. And there was another comment that was mentioned during public comment. Um, I did not correct that, but there was a comment about, um, Mr. Booker following. Students around, uh, to their homes. And that is inaccurate. None of my executive team are in the habit of following students home. Um, in their cars, so I wanted to correct that. Can we bring up the report, please? And we do have a few things going on. Can you go to the third slide? We've had some students that have been patiently waiting. And we are going to, um, ask, um, Dr. Flashman. Soon to be, to introduce the students and what they have been doing.
Thank you, Dr. Hurst, um, board president, uh, board trustees. Um, also thank you, doctor, for, uh. Confering that, uh, title on me. I'm, I'm close. Um, I'm here to actually talk about a, um, really amazing event that we had this past Saturday. Uh, September twenty eighth. Um, and before I get into it, I want to, um, uh, hail one of our incredible, incredible members of our special ed community. Um, Ms. Janine Bishop. Um, she's not here tonight, but she put this whole event together, um, and really want to give her her kudos. Um, on September twenty eighth, uh, our school community was fortunate to hear from a remarkable group of young people. Who gave their time and talent, uh, to participate in a student panel. For the district special education parent conference, and I'm gonna introduce those four wonderful young people here right now. Um, Avril Stokes is a senior at Hercules High School. His interests are helping students advocate for themselves. And helping others with autism achieve self-control through music and white noise. He's enrolled in the Hidden Genius Project. And he has designed his own headphones for people with sound sensitivity. Avril's a member of the YES Club and the Black Student Union, and he plans to attend Cal State East Bay to study business. Second student is Haven Folds. Who is a junior at Hercules High School. She loves to draw anime and other cartoons. Haven takes dance and drum line and is in the, and is in the Black Student Union at Hercules High. She wants to be many things when she's older, including a teacher, an artist, a model, and a psychologist. Jarvis Morgan is a senior at El Cerrito High School. Jarvis plays varsity water polo and was recently cast in a student production of Frankenstein. And attends the media academy at El Cerrito High School. He plans to attend junior college and study film production. And lastly, Sean Loison is an El Cerrito High School senior who enjoys spending time with his friends and playing video games. He's a kind-hearted and thoughtful friend. His teachers appreciate that he always greets them and asks, asks about them. Excuse me, asks about them whenever he comes to class. Sean will apply to community colleges next semester and is interested in career and technical education programs. And information technology and video arts. The students generously shared. The students generously shared their perspectives about friendships, goals, challenges they face, experiences navigating general education, and their advice for parents. They were genuine about their experiences and inspirational to everyone in attendance, including each other. As the session wrapped up, they went into the chat, it was, it was a, uh, virtual, um, uh, session, and so they went into the, the, the Zoom chat to support and congratulate each other. And we're all very incredibly proud of them, and I must say, um, this event was one of the highlights of the year, but these four students speaking, um, absolutely blew me away. Um, it was a true, true, one of those moments in your career that you're gonna remember for a really long time. So I wanna thank, I understand the students are, are online right now. Um, I wanna thank them, uh, all personally. Um, and with that, I, I turn it back to you, Superintendent Hurst.
I too, would like to, uh, thank our students and thank you, sir, for your leadership. Um, did our students wanna say anything?
I believe so.
Okay, so let's, uh, introduce them, bringing them up one at a time. Are they panelists now? There's one? Okay, so let's bring them up as a panelist and ask them to unmute. It's Sean Loison, if you can unmute, we certainly wanna hear from you.
Thank you. Um, joining the, uh, little conference was actually awesome, and I liked, um, listening to other students and learning more about them, what they do, as well as the, uh, other people that were in the, uh, conference, and I thoroughly enjoyed what they, um, said and all the questions that they gave us, and I'm very glad that we got to answer them.
Thank you so much for sharing, Sean. Again, thank you for your courage. And I know the other students are not here because it's late, but we wanna say thank you to all of you as well.
So, Dr. Hurst, my kid is here.
Oh.
Um, listen, she's watching at home. Uh, if you have something to say, Fran, text it to me. Oh, I don't know if that breaks a brown neck. I don't know, text it to me anyway. Okay, she's listening. So Haven's listening, good job, great job. We're moving on.
Okay, Dr. Hurst.
And then once we get the text, we'll read that out. Thank you so much, Haven. And we're gonna go back and we're gonna go back to the second slide. And we're gonna take this opportunity to recognize one of our executive cabinet members. Go more down, sir. You're being honored. Okay. I just wanna say a few things. Um, um, our board president collected a lot of information, some quotes. I wanna read some of these quotes. If that's okay? Um, here's what some of your team has said, um. Guthrie, he said, congratulations, thank you for being our leader. Um, that was from Ms. Ruiz, and then April said, thank you for all your dedication to our community and schools. Your work has inspired so many to continue to pro- progress towards equity inclusion. And then Siobhan said, thank you, Guthrie, for being our fearless leader and always keeping students at the center of all of your decisions. We appreciate your steadfast loyalty to our department. And I'm gonna read a few more. Another team member said, thank you for all the leadership you provided to the Special Ed Department. We're excited to see the positive changes that you provide. Um, another one, and I agree with this one, Special Education Department is not easy to manage. It has several components to learn and contentious cases to resolve. With the vision of, with your vision of inclusion, we're here to support every student with different abilities in our district. I have to read this one too. This is from Janine. On behalf of the Special Education Department, we would like to acknowledge all that you've done and all that you've taken on, the long days, the tough decisions, all while leading with enthusiasm and remaining commitment committed every day towards equity, inclusion, and success for our students. And we wanna take this opportunity to recognize you, sir. Oh, before we, um, recognize you, this is also is this is from Haven Folds. Uh, she did say about the experience, she said it was a fun experience. I'm glad I saw new people and people I already knew. Thank you for having me, and thank you, sir, for being an amazing leader. Let's come down and honor him.
All right, everybody, we're gonna take a picture.
Sorry, uh,
Hold on, let's
President, I have a point of order. Um, it's almost ten o'clock. I don't want us to hit ten o'clock and then we have to close the meeting, so I'm, I wanna make a quick motion. I make a motion that we extend the meeting till twelve, uh, with a caveat that we finish our action and consent items only. This is just so that we have enough time and no comments from the board, just action and consent items.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. We're gonna go to the vote very quickly. Uh, trustee Espinoza Junior, your vote, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Wilson, your vote, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Phillips, your vote, sir? Yes. Trustee Christian, your vote, sir?
Yes.
Trustee Reckler, your vote, man?
Yes.
Clark Gonzalez Hoi, your vote?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Let's take a nice quick picture. Here we go. See you later.
All right.
I can, all right. One, two, and three. One, two, three. Oh, that was like two digits. All right, ladies, thank you so very much. If ladies, if you ladies would like to say something to Mr. Flash, Director Flashman, please feel free.
Just on behalf of special ed, we'd like to appreciate Guthrie for all that he does for the department, and we appreciate.
Thank you so very much.
Guthrie.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you all so very much. Thank you for waiting, thank you for your patience, it was really wonderful. Thank you so very much. Okay, Dr. Hurst, we're moving on. They're trying to get it to work, okay. You know, with Dr. Hurst, we may have to move it to your next superintendent report if they can't get it to work in the next minute. No pressure, Richard. After this, okay. Rochelle's gonna try, Dr., uh, Director Forrest is gonna try.
President Smith Folds?
Yes, sir.
Just wanted to let the board know that I need to leave at ten.
Okay, thank you. Staff, do you think we're gonna be able to play the video, or do we need to move it to the next report? No stress. Okay, this is what we're gonna do, no stress. Director Forrest, go ahead. Okay. Okay. Thank you for your patience, everyone. She's trying to get it. Thank you for your patience, everyone.
Were we able to make her the host? Are you able to bring that up, Director Forrest?
Director Forrest, do you want us to move on until you can, and then we come back? Okay, let's do that. Let's move on. Let's move on, and then if you can get it to work, Director Forrest, please just wave at me and give me a thumbs up, and then we can come back to it, okay? So let's, is, is your superintendent's report complete?
Yes, ma'am, just the recognition and the video.
Recognition, uh
Of Mr. Flashman.
Of Director Flashman, and then the video. Okay, and then you're complete. Okay. Thank you, Superintendent Hurst. Again, thank you, Director Flashman, thank you to your team. It was an absolutely amazing recognition. We're now moving on to our action items. We are moving on to E one. Public hearing and approval of resolution twenty-four, am I on the right thing? Yeah, twenty-four, twenty-five dash twenty-five grades transitional kindergarten through twelve textbook and instructional materials compliance for the physical year. Uh, Ms. Acosta for rap- I practice too. Acosta for, for proscus. Ms. Acosta for proscus, this is your item, ma'am.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, President Smith Folds, uh, members of the board and public. Um, the California Education Code six zero one one nine specifies that in order to be eligible to receive state funds available for the purposes of purchasing textbooks and related materials, the governing board of the school district should hold a public hearing at which the board shall encourage participation by parents, teachers, members of the community interested in the affairs of the school district, and bargaining unit leaders, the opportunity to address the board of education regarding whether each pupil in the district has sufficient textbooks or instructional materials, or both in mathematics, science, history, social science, English Language Arts, including English Language Development component of an adopted program. Foreign language if the student is enrolled in a foreign language course. Health, if the student is enrolled in a health course. The governing board also shall determine the availability of laboratory science equipment as applicable to science laboratory courses offered in grades nine to twelve inclusive. The board shall use the information provided to it by the district in conjunction with any information provided by the public during the hearing to determine if every student has sufficient core textbooks in specific content areas. Once sufficiency is verified, the board shall adopt a resolution to that effect. President Smith Folds, can we please open a public hearing regarding textbook sufficiency?
Absolutely. I now declare a recess to this board meeting in order to hold the annual textbook sufficiency hearing. The textbook sufficiency hearing is for WCC USD twenty-four, twenty-five school year and is now open. Ms. Acosta for proscus, please provide us with the current status of sufficiency in the district and how that status was determined.
We are one hundred percent textbook sufficient. The process that we followed this year was we collected textbook sufficiency forms from every teacher at every school in order to determine sufficiency. Each form was signed by the teacher to certify the availability of sufficient textbooks for students throughout our online-informed K-12 system or through a hard copy that was turned in. If the teacher was unable to sign the form, we had the principal verify sufficiency and sign the form for those specific classes. We also collected a signature from each principal, additionally verifying school-wide sufficiency. Based on the results of this process, we have determined that all students have all the required textbooks and instructional materials.
Thank you. At this point, are there any community members or other interested parties who wish to address the board on textbook sufficiency? Seeing none. If there are no more community members who wish to address the board on this issue, I declare the hearing closed. Seeing that we had no public comment, board, do we have any questions? Seeing no questions, may I have a motion?
President, I move that we approve resolution number two four two five dash two five resolution for grades K through twelve textbook and instructional materials compliance for physical year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Board, do we have any comments? Seeing none, we'll go straight to the vote. Trustee Espinoza Junior, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Wilson, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Phillips, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler, your vote? Thank you. Trustee Reckler, your vote?
Reckler, yes.
Thank you. Clark Gonzalez Hoi, your vote?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you so very much. We're now moving to action item E2, 2425, single plan for student achievement or SPSAs. Ms. Sigler, this is your item.
Thank you. We are thrilled to present the final SPSA from Stige Elementary School. This SPSA is part of $3.8 million in local control funding and $4.5 million in title funds allocated to school sites. The SPSA contains the school's vision and initiatives to improve academics. The plan contains annual measurable outcomes based on the local measures for each goal. It addresses the needs of students, especially those at risk of not meeting state standards. This plan was developed and approved by the school site council in consultation with ELAC and APAC. The public is able to access and view this plan on the district's website.
Thank you.
Oh, yes.
I'm sorry.
No, I was gonna say, we asked that you approve this plan.
Thank you so very much. Do we have any public comment? Seeing no public comment, board, are there any questions? Seeing no questions, I'll take a motion.
President, I move that we approve and accept the SPSA for Stige Elementary School.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Do we have any comments? Trustee Phillips, you have a comment?
I do.
Go ahead.
Um, first, I wanna backtrack just a moment. I wanna say thank you to trustee Gonzalez Hoi, uh, because I think in the item around community schools, I think you did clarify the intent of the drafters. And I think that that is important, even if I don't agree with it. I think it's important for transparency's sake, so thank you for that. Um, and trustee Wilson, thank you for your contribution to that as well. I appreciate, uh, that there is an effort that's going to happen for two years to find new revenue. Uh, but that we're being transparent with the public as to what would or might happen um, if the revenue's not there. I also think that there needs to be some transparency around Stige. For example, we heard folks asking for a complete rebuild. But nobody told them that there's not money to do a complete rebuild. Stige has been allowed to, despite some people on the ground, their best efforts, Stige has been allowed to languish. Um, and it has been allowed to become what it has become. Um, in many ways, that site has been neglected. And not just facilities-wise. It cannot continue the way that it is. And if it is going to continue exactly the way it is, that school needs to be closed. I know that that's not something that anybody wants to hear, and I know that somebody is gonna get upset at me for saying it, but it cannot be allowed to continue the way it is. And if it's not going to be closed, then there has to be a real action plan for that school. And we seem to get an action plan for that school every other year, right? Um, nothing ever comes to fruition. Um, and I believe that the reason is sort of like what I said earlier about the resolutions. Sometimes we do more talking than doing, and Stige has been a space where we've done more talking than doing. I was supposed to leave at 10 o'clock, and then this item was called, and I sat back down because I wanted to say this. Um, you know, it's like, you know, it's like almost being in a, in a bad relationship, right? Either work on the relationship or leave the person. Don't just stay and abuse them. And the kids who go through Stige are being abused. So either fix the school, and I'm saying that to the board, to staff, or close it, because what is continuously happening, it's not right.
Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll go straight to the vote. Trustee, Student Trustee Espinoza Jr.?
Yes.
Thank you. Student trustee Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Clark Gonzalez Hoi?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Trustee Phillips? Trustee Phillips, I need you to stay for three minutes. I have to go to the bathroom. If you leave, the meeting is no longer a meeting, so just stay while I go to the restroom. Um, sorry that that is on public TV, but we, it is what it is. I'll be right back. Clark Gonzalez Hoi, please continue the meeting. Trustee Phillips, two minutes.
Um, okay, thank you. Um, we're gonna now move to E3. I think Ms. Payne, this is your item.
Yes, good evening. Thank you very much. Uh, tonight, we recommend to the board to approve the preliminary services agreements for the Kennedy High School and Richmond High School modernization project. We completed the procurement pursuant to the procedures and criterias that were established for the lease leaseback procurement. We received five competitive proposals, all from very qualified firms. We had an interview process that was held with a diverse committee. We had two representatives from our facilities and bond team. We had a industry representative from another school district, Dublin. Their senior bond facilities director also participated. And then we had former principal Mr. De Leon uh, and former principal Phil Johnson, both principals of, former principals of Kennedy and Richmond, participate in the panel. So following the best value criteria, um, as outlined in those procedures, the recommendation tonight before the board is to approve the preliminary services agreement uh, for Kennedy High School with Ovrac Construction, a local Richmond firm, with a contract value of $53,440. And with BHM Construction at Richmond High School for $35,000. Attached to the agenda tonight are both preliminary services agreements. With the board's approval tonight, we would be able to move forward with the preliminary services agreements, which would include uh, the lease leaseback contractors working with our architects on constructability reviews, um, design review, uh, estimate review. Um, and it would continue, uh, it would allow our projects to continue to move forward. We would be coming back to the board, uh, for the future site and lease agreements. Um, and so this is just an authorization for the preliminary services, and uh, we recommend that these be approved this evening.
Thank you so very much. Do we have any public comment? Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none? Great. Can I get a motion?
Sorry, yes, I make a motion that we approve the preliminary service agreements for both Kennedy High School and Richmond High School.
Thank you. Is there a second?
One second.
Thank you so very much. Any comments from the board? Seeing none? Great. We'll move to the vote. Trust, Student trustee Espinoza Jr.?
Yes.
Thank you. Student trustee Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Thank you. Clark Gonzalez Hoi?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you so very much. We are now moving to our pulled consent items. We are going to start with consent item. I'm sorry, did we do the, do we have the video or no? Oh, we do have the video. Before we go to consent, we'll play the video, and then we'll go with our consent items. Staff, are ready for the video? Take your time, friend.
Hi, thanks so much for having me speak at your State of the District breakfast. I'm Rochelle Rogers-Ard, and I am the West Contra Costa School District Anti-Racism Consultant. Sincere apologies that I could not be there today in person, but special thanks to Dr. Hurst, to Rochelle Forrest, and the comms team for making this video happen. Uh, so happy to be sharing with you today a little bit about the work that we've accomplished and the work that we're looking forward to do this year, so I'm just gonna jump right in. You know, we understand that our educational system is at the precipice of a turning point from which we may not return. Our upcoming election, uh, will either have a tremendously negative effect or our systems might remain the way they are. Either way, it's time to make a change. And while change feels scary for lots of people, the fact is that change done well pushes people out of their comfort zone and often allows for new and different things to happen that can be a great improvement over the systems that we already know and love. And sometimes we hold on to those systems far too long, right? Uh, because we are frightened of change. So I'm extremely proud of the changes that WCCUSD has made over the past year under Dr. Hurst's leadership in partnership with the school board. For example, we facilitated six anti-racism trainings with the extended cabinet, uh, understanding that if we are to really make a huge change around, uh, pushing against racism, our leaders have to be at the forefront of that change, modeling, uh, and showing what it looks like to be anti-racism leaders. So part of that work was asking each of them to develop their own anti-racism leadership stance, to share it with their teams, and to make sure that folks understand this is the work that we're holding, and our leaders are at the forefront of the work. We facilitated three anti-racist trainings with the school board, although not the entire school board, if the majority school board was there, we do hope to do additional trainings with the entire school board this year. We met with parent groups at several elementary schools. You know, when we think about change, it's very hard sometimes for those who are somewhat resistant to understand why are we working around pushing against racism? And yet, the way that we have a vision for our schools, a vision for our classrooms, where our children can be seen as whole adults, not just a few, not just those who live in a certain zip code, not, not just those who are at a certain socioeconomic status, but that all of our children can be seen as full and complete individuals in the schools. And to do that, one cannot pretend that racism doesn't exist. One must push against it. We also created a cohort of schools that received in-depth training, coaching, and development to shift policies, practices, and procedures at their school sites. And we called those the immersive schools. And so last year, we began with six immersive schools, and as part of that, we facilitated training for their teams. So each school brought in a team of educators to support anti-racism work at the classroom level. We are really excited that this year, we will add 10 additional schools for a total of 16 schools in the immersive schools work. Meeting with them every other week, naming some of the racist practices, policies, and procedures that need to be shifted, giving training to site-based personnel. But perhaps most importantly, really being able to do, um, walkthroughs, to do school visits, to do classroom visits, to really make sure and create spaces that allow our students to begin the very, very best education, which means, as I said previously, pushing against racist systems that keep some of our Black and Brown students marginalized. We also created an advisory group that developed the rubric that we'll be using when we do site visits. And we facilitated a student summit, uh, that was co-facilitated by West Contra Costa students and a young adult facilitator to really listen to BIPOC students around their experiences with race within WCCUSD. You know, what we learned the most was from those students was that adults don't listen and don't believe them. Adults don't listen to our students, and when, even when we hear them, we often don't believe them. And so I'm really excited that we're going to do another summit in December that will allow us to hear even more from our students. We must demonstrate that we are listening to them, that they're important to us, that their experiences are important, are important, and we must believe them. And the way to demonstrate that is by having, again, going back to those changes, right? By being able to change some of the experiences that our students are having. But perhaps the most incredible thing, and, and that which I am most proud of, is that the WCCUSD board passed an anti-racism policy on August 7th. This is a huge step towards creating improved learning environments for our students. And actually, to have a policy, not just a statement, but a clear policy that says we are a district that is pushing against racism was a huge step. Congrats to our board. And now, the hard work truly begins in finding out how to implement that policy. So to that end, if you would, if you could take a moment to be really, really present. If you could put your phones down and put your forks down and put your coffee down and just be really still for a moment. And you can close your eyes if you want. I'm just gonna invite you into this space for just a quick moment. And if you could imagine a world where those who are furthest from opportunity are given a human level of care. Imagine a country where people of the global majority are in positions to break through historical boundaries that are developed, managed, and sustained for those with privilege. Imagine a state where funds are distributed to our needy schools regardless of zip code. Imagine a school district with the courage to push against racist policies, practices, curricula, and behaviors to create equitable spaces for Black and Brown children and the adults who serve them. Imagine a group of district leaders, principals, and teachers who agree to speak for those who are marginalized and silenced. And now, if you could come back and open your eyes, for those of you who had closed them, and ask yourself, am I one of those people? Am I a person who's willing to stand in the gap for marginalized and silenced children and adults? Am I a person willing to challenge the tons and tons of emails and speaker cards rooted in privilege at board meetings? Am I a person willing to choose the unpopular, to speak truth to power, and risk people saying horrible things about me so that a newcomer student is treated humanely? So that a Black boy isn't sent to special needs classes at the tender age of four and a half? Or so that a Black female leader isn't silenced when she tells the truth? Am I that person? If not, what are we doing here? But if so, it is time to act. The state of the West Contra Costa School District is that we are pushing back against racism wherever we find it, even if within ourselves. Because as Kendi says, there is no neutrality in the racism struggle. You are either actively fighting against racism or you are allowing it to continue. Which one are you?
Thank you so very much. Thank you, staff, for working diligently to get that video up. We are now moving to our pull consent item, the C2, ratification of negotiated non-bond change order. Mr. Wilson, you pulled this item. Would you like to speak to why you pulled it, sir?
Yes, I just have one question in terms of the fencing at Kennedy High School. Where, where exactly on campus is it gonna be installed?
Uh, good evening. Um, so this fencing is related to the relocation of the classrooms and administrative spaces that were in the 100 and 200 building, which is on the frontage road to the temporary campus that is located on the back of the campus near Burke Avenue. And so, um, there's fencing that's been
And so, um, there's fencing that's been placed. We are preparing a project. Um, and we will be demolishing the 100 and 200 building next summer. And so to create as little disruption as possible to, uh, the students and staff, um, we've relocated them to the temp campus, and that's where the 100 and 200 building, um, is currently located.
And is this a chain-linked fence? What, what kind of fence is this?
Um, so yes, um, this is, it's temporary fencing, kind of like, it, it won't be there forever. It's in support of the construction of the project and the temporary campus that's currently being housed there. And the change order that we're bringing before the board tonight is actually a credit to the project. So when we have a contract, we think of it. When you have a project, we essentially have what we call sometimes a, a three-legged stool. So we've got the scope of the project, we've got the time associated with the project and the cost. So the item before the board tonight is actually a credit back to the project, um, in savings based on the final layout of the panels that were selected.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Board, is there a motion?
Board President, I move that we approve the ratification of the non-bond change orders.
Is there a second?
Oh, second, bud.
Thank you. Board, any comments? Seeing none? We'll go straight to the vote. Trustee Espinoza, Jr.?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler?
Yes.
Thank you, Clerk Gonzalez Hoi?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you so very much. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, I would like to, um, pull, and I meant to pull either the, actually, the Harvest consultant contract. There's been a few questions from some community members. I wanna have the opportunity to meet with them, so I'd like to pull that item.
Point of order, would it be okay if I just, um, talked about that just for a second? So you know, we did get an email, and attached at the bottom was a reference to Berkeley's plan. And I read Berkeley's plan, and I printed it, and it's actually really good, especially page six. And so I just bent the page, and I was gonna give it to you to take a look at. But the way this is laid out and the way that, um, they've organized their information and their strategic actions and how they map out how they've met them, this is like really worth looking at. So if I could give that to you. Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Okay, we're now moving to consent item number six, ratified contracts. Trustee Reckler, you pulled this item?
I did, thank you. So I just wanted to make a note on high expectations where, uh, their annual measure, measurable outcomes are, um, this is important, but there's another piece to this. So what they've talked about is like how people feel and how people have interpreted the work, and that's really important. But I'd like to see like real data points of, you know, like real skills being developed or real trainings or the number of people. There, I'd like to see more solid, um, data points in high expectations. That was just my, my quote on that. For curriculum associates, does anybody know what it costs per year when you're done with all this training and implementation for iReady? Does anybody know that?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
So there's a big contract for curriculum associates, uh, 209K, uh, for the total for the year, 456K for iReady. And it looks like it's all the licenses plus training. After all that training, like what do we think the price is into the future with, with all the, without all the startup costs? Does anybody know?
I don't have that information, but I can certainly pull it up and follow up in a Friday memo.
Okay, um, if I could just understand that. Um, and then if we could get a presentation on curriculum associates on iReady, I think we, I've been, I've asked at least a handful of times, um, if we could understand that. Um, and, um, so if, if, that would be, that would be very helpful. Uh, do you wanna move that item?
I'm sorry, Brett, you're finished with that item?
Yeah, I just wanted to make that comment on that.
All right. Thank you so very much. Board, is there a motion? Are you motioning, trustee Reckler?
Um, yeah, I'll move curriculum associates.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Board, are there any comments?
Y- yeah, my, my comment is, is that it seems really expensive. I don't really know, but I'm increasingly concerned about the number of ongoing contracts in this kind of field for iReady, and then there's, uh, there, there's, I'm pulling a blank right now, Parent Square. And there's just a number of ongoing contracts where you're just sucked into this particular program, and you're gonna pay on and on and on and not be able to switch because now you're embedded in it. And so I just wanna understand like what the dollars are, and I wanna understand what, what the program does, what it provides. Um, so that's my comment.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. Trustee Espinoza, Jr.?
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you, clerk. Gonzalez Hoi, not your turn. Trustee Reckler?
Yes.
Thank you, clerk Gonzalez Hoi.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you, sir. All right, we are now moving to item eight.
Yes, C8 is me. It should just be really quick. So I wanna commend you for the aspirational decrease in legal fees. Um, so I, I have two questions. The first one is, are you holding any backup in case you don't hit that number?
Thank you for the question. Uh, yes, we're currently preparing for first interim. We're carefully keeping track of what's coming in for this first interim. Um, we're hoping to see some reductions in build hours during this first quarter. If we don't see that, uh, we will be likely increasing at first interim. But we are hopeful that those hours will, that our team will work really hard to keep those hours down.
And then my second question is, will contracts come back per firm? Or will contracts come back if you exceed $3.4 million? So if you exceed AALRR by 2 million, but you're still under, you know, or 200, you know, whatever it is, were you, are you holding to the big number? Or do you come back per firm?
Uh, it would actually be per purchase order.
Yeah, okay.
So if we need to increase a purchase order, we'll bring it back for a change order for your approval.
Okay, thank you. I don't have anything else, so I'll, I'll move that, uh, legal contracts, and I'll wish you good luck on holding that number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments? Seeing none, we'll go to the vote. Trustee Espinoza, Jr.?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Clerk Gonzalez Hoi?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. We are now moving to agenda item C13, Approval of the New Board Policy 3517-1, Menstrual Equity. Trustee Reckler, you pulled this item?
Yes, thank you. Um, so the, uh, I can, you know, I didn't see this before, but when I printed it, I, I noted it, which is, um, so there's a one-time cost for purchasing the signage and the additional dispensers. But what happens with the receptacles, the ones that are in the stalls that you put the?
Thank you for the question. Um, as part of the initial rollout of the dispensers and the receptacles in the stall, um, they have been installed in all of the separate stalls and in the single, um, restrooms. Just like other items, um, from time to time, something can come off and need to be repaired. And so, um, as part of our annual inspections, if anybody notices that one's missing, they can submit a work order, and then our team will go in and provide the necessary repair.
Okay, so that like gets added to the head spec or the building's, the bathroom spec, whatever it is. And now everybody's getting a receptacle after they're, okay.
That's correct, and they're in place. So if anyone's listening and they're aware of a location where it isn't currently, um, we would encourage them to reach out to our department or to submit a work order so that we can be sure to get out to have that replaced.
Great. Okay, great. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. And I'll go ahead, I'll go ahead and move it. 3517 dot one menstrual equity policy.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. Trust, student trustee Espinoza, Jr., your vote, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. Student trustee Wilson, your vote?
Yeah.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler, your vote?
Yes.
Clerk Gonzalez Hoi, your vote?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you very much, everyone. We have concluded tonight's board meeting. We are now at, the next scheduled board meeting will be on October 23rd, 2024, at Levanya de Jean. We are now adjourning this meeting at 10:30. Thank you.